Planning Board is now in session. Good evening. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to formally welcome Ms. Jothi Grammer, our new town planner. This is our first town meeting to the Planning Board. Very excited to have her on board. And I know she's going to be very busy over the next couple of weeks, meeting new departments, other boards, getting to know everyone, but we're happy to have you here.
Thanks so much. Thank you so much. Looking forward to starting the job.
New town planner. This is great. First item on the agenda, 7:00 PM, public hearing, site plan review, 255 Turnpike Road. Public hearing notice. What do I do with that? Here it is. I'm going to read the public hearing notice for the site plan approval. Per Section 174-10 of the Salpro zoning code, the Planning Board of the Town of Salpro shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 18th, 2016, at the Thomas J. McAuliffe Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, to consider the application of Comcan Incorporated for site plan approval at 7:00 PM. This hearing consists -- this hearing concerns the conversion of 2,100 square feet of an existing commercial building for a registered marijuana dispensary. The property is owned by Unicorn Realty Trust, William A. Bacardi, trustee, 255 Turnpike Road, Salpro, Mass., Sesers Map 27, Lot 6. Copy of the plans and applications may be reviewed at the office of the Planning Board at the townhouse during normal business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Sincerely, and it's signed by myself, Don Morris, Chairman of the Planning Board. We have a few people here tonight. Good evening, everyone. First of all, you're going to need a microphone to speak, so whoever's going to go first, but what we'd like you to do is introduce yourself and your team, whoever's the team leader.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dan Merrick with Merrick Engineering. Here with me, on behalf of the applicant, are Ellen Rosenfeld and Mark Rosenfeld. And Valerio is at the end. He's counsel for the applicant. We submitted an application for site plan approval. I think the board is familiar with this. The Zoning Board of Appeals granted a special permit for an RMD at this facility a few months ago, in April. We've now submitted for site plan approval. We have received some comments. I know that just tonight, we received comments from your peer review consultant, so obviously we're not -- we don't have anything to respond to that formally, but I will go through and give you an overview of the proposal, and then we can delve into any comments the board may have. The site is located at 255 Turnpike Road. It's an existing two-story building. It is presently the home of a contractor's yard, contractor's office, really. The front part of the building consists of an office upstairs with what was a, what is now a showroom downstairs, the contractor used. And the rear part of the building has loading doors here. These are garage bays. The applicant intends to occupy the first floor of the building, the showroom area, and then one garage bay. That whole area is proposed to be renovated, to accommodate the RMD. The rest of the building will continue to be used by the contractor, who owns the property. They operate, they have one person who works in the second floor in that office, and it's a very low intensity use for that aspect of the facility.
Could you, could you back up a little bit?
Yes, sir.
And repeat what you said, but much closer to the microphone?
Sure.
So let's start with the owner.
Yes.
That very beginning part. I'm getting signals over here that no one can hear you.
The owner, the owner is Unicorn Realty Trust. There's a contractor that operates out of it, which is basically owned by the owner of the building. And that contractor has an office on the second floor of the building. They're going to continue to have an office on the second floor of the building. They have one person who works in that office during the day. It's their bookkeeper. The first floor of the building, which is now a showroom, which has historically been used as a showroom for the owner of the building, is proposed to be converted to the RMD. That and one garage bay. The other garage bays and the office on the second floor are going to remain in their current condition and used by the owner of the property for the contracting business that they operate. We had proposed to you this plan that is behind me, which is basically a site plan of existing conditions. The site has an existing driveway out onto Route 9. It has existing parking facilities, existing, an existing well, an existing septic system. Let me just touch on that while I'm on that topic. There's an existing septic system at the back of the property. We provided an analysis this morning to the Board of Health regarding the capacity of that system and the fact that the proposed use, in conjunction with the contractor's use of the building, will not exceed the capacity of that system. And the Board of Health has issued a statement to me, and I believe it was copied to the board, indicating that they agree that the system is adequate for the proposed use of the site. So the septic system is okay as it sits right now, and it will not be adversely affected by the proposed use of the facility. The site has existing drainage that drains out into Route 9 by catch basins and pipes. And when we received some comments, oh, about a week and a half ago, from the police chief, he had some thoughts and some concerns, and we met on-site with him. I don't want to steal his thunder here, but he did ask us to consider some changes, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this plan. I have generated a sketch, which the chief has seen. I'm going to hand this out right now for the board. The chief has asked for a few things. Basically, to open up visibility on the site and to provide for improved traffic flow. And I'm just going to kind of go through the changes. You can see that I've kind of highlighted, this is a sketch plan I'm working on, a formal site plan revision, to incorporate these changes. One of the issues that the chief would like to see is, is the vegetation along the left side taken out, so that there's clear visibility, so that when they drive by the side, or if they're on the adjacent property to the left or right, they will be able to see down into the site and basically be afforded with clear views of all areas of the property. So we will be proposing to this slope on the left side that's shaded in green, and I have this plan here. That slope on the left, we are proposing to remove the trees and any tall vegetation from that area. It will still be left in, you know, a natural condition, but the chief has asked that the trees and the taller vegetation be removed. So that would be part of our proposal, assuming that the board agreed that it was a reasonable thing to do. The second significant thing that the chief asked for was to provide a circulating driveway around the entire building. At present, the driveway comes in and it goes to the right of the building, and it is paved around back to where this jog is, but this right now is used for outside storage for the contractor. That would be abandoned. This existing paved area would be used as driveway, and then we would take, and we have an existing, to the left of the dispensary location is a timber retaining wall. We would remove that retaining wall, install a new, taller retaining wall further left, should be about 13 feet off the building, and we would basically accommodate.
Dan, one more interruption. Hold on a second.
Yes, sir. That would allow for basically a continuous circulation of one-way traffic around the building, in the site, all the way around the building, and then out. We are also, along the lines of that, we're proposing to re-stripe these existing parking spaces on the right side to be angled, which fits in well with the one-way driving lane around the building. We're also proposing to add five spaces back here, gravel parking spaces for employees, which will bring us to a total of 21 parking spaces. The last thing that the chief asked for was a fence. You can see here in blue on the sketch, I have a chain link fence proposed around like this. The chief has indicated that he would prefer to be an eight-foot fence. I was talking with the building inspector. He indicated to us that any portion of the fence that's more than 10 feet from the side or rear property lines could be eight feet as an accessory structure under the bylaw, but that anything within 10 feet could only be six feet. That would be this portion here on the right. We have talked to the chief about this, and we are willing, I think the board understands that you can't compel an applicant to do something that violates the zoning bylaw, but we would be willing to accommodate a condition that would require us to seek a variance for an eight-foot fence in that section within 10 feet of the property line. Obviously, if the zoning board were not inclined to grant that, there could be no ramification. If that were appealed by someone, again, you know, that condition would have to become null and void, but we were happy to seek the variance, and if the zoning board grants it, obviously happy to install that section of fence as an eight-foot tall fence. Those are the major issues that we have right now. We did, I did just receive your comment letter from your peer review consultant, so I will provide a written response, point by point, on that. I didn't see anything in there that was, that I think we need to address at this moment, unless the board has any questions on that topic. But, so, if you have any questions for me about the proposed activity, we have submitted an application with a floor plan, top and bottom. There's no changes proposed upstairs, except there is an interior stairwell that's going to be removed. Lighting, let me touch on lighting very quickly. We have, and signage, we have lighting proposed presently, we had lighting proposed on three sides of the building, front, right, and rear, because that's where the access was going to be. Obviously, with the circulating driveway now, we need to change that. We need to add lighting to the fourth side of the building, left side of the building. So we're going to generate a new lighting proposal for you. Basically, we're using wall packs. I understand your consultant had a few comments about that, which we will address, but they're all full cutoff fixtures. They're all pointing directly downward. They're not going to generate glare. They're not going to illuminate the property lines. Any properties beyond the property boundaries, we submitted a photometrics analysis to that effect. We'll give you a new photometrics analysis for the revised lighting proposal. Signage is very simple. There's going to be no wall sign for this facility. There's an existing standing sign here. There's a drawing in your package. We're basically just going to have a sign that does nothing more than note the name of the business, Comcan Inc. There's no graphic other than their logo. There's no indication of what the business does. It's just that this is in accordance with state regulation. It's just a statement of the name of the business. And that will be on the top of the standing sign, and then the contractor who uses the site will have a sign on the bottom of the standing sign. This is an existing standing sign that we're going to repurpose for this. It will be externally lit with spotlights. Pretty straightforward, really. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Normally, we would open this up to the planning board and then to other town officials first, and then to the neighbors. So I want to skip the planning board right now and go to the police chief, who had a meeting, has had two meetings with Merrick.
One meeting.
One meeting. And ask, kind of fill in, if, give the chief an opportunity to cover those things that he was concerned with, and any remaining concerns. I will say, though, that for the beginning of a public hearing for a site plan, you're off to a slow start. I'm not saying it's a bad start, but having received these materials today, you know, we're opening the public hearing, but, and hopefully we'll get caught up. But normally, all of these type of materials, these type of meetings, and the discussions are had considerably before the opening of the public hearing, so that the materials that you present to the board are close to the ones that everyone, like the public safety officials, are pretty close to in agreement with. It's okay, you know, it's July, we're opening the public hearing, but I just have to say that it seemed to be considerably, we're making some rather major changes known to the planning board on the first hour of the public hearing, giving us no real opportunity to have looked at them from before, or, you know, maybe make some intelligent comments as we go through this hearing tonight. And I will also say that over the last probably month that this is, this hearing has been advertised, a lot of people have come to me and expressed concern about the planning board approving the facility on night one. And based on the information that we have, I don't see that happening. But again, not necessarily off to a bad start, just a slow start. And to assure the public that the planning board has a long history of thorough review of these site plans, and that by the time that we're done with the site plan, hopefully all the neighbors, the proponent, and the public officials will be on the same page and ready to move forward. So there'll be no, there'll be no vote to address the site plan approval until we have a lot more information and it's all tied together. Thank you. Chief?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are we doing? Just, I would agree, when it came through, I saw the plan, and I think we could have stopped some of the changes that were made if we had met, you know, prior for a site plan. That being said, we were able to meet last week. We went over some things. Some good ideas came up, and then I was able to meet with Mark Rosenfeld on Friday, incredibly receptive to the ideas that I had. So it seems like we're really moving in the right direction. I memorialize some of the conversation that we've had, and you've heard about some of it tonight, in no particular order, just for the interior of the building, and I'm not sure that we're here to talk about the interior layout, but I did voice my concern about moving a security and IT room over where the vault is, and putting up some secure walls around that.
Could you, Dan, could you put that print-up of the floor layout so that we can see what the chief is referring to?
Sure. And we do have a revised layout that we will be submitting. I can show you that as well, that basically addressed the comments the chief generated, but I'll show you what we submitted first.
So basically, they had a security and IT equipment room. I wasn't comfortable with that being, you know, unsecured walls, so they agreed to move it adjacent to the vault and use the same security walls for that. So that's a change that was made. We also agreed to eliminate all the exterior windows, except for the front of the building. Eliminate access from the interior stairs from the second floor that goes down through the middle of it. You've already heard about that. Possibly eliminate a rear door presently located at the rear utility and storage room. We're exploring that per the building code. You've already heard about making the You've already heard about making the parking and traffic pattern flow into a one-way loop around the building, exiting on the west side. That was something that I was adamant on, just for the constraints of the lot. And then also, just having for security, when officers come to check the building, a clear slight sightline from front to back and then also when they patrol it, you know, when the business is open or closed, they'll be come into the lot, circle right around. Also, the fencing that goes around three-quarters of the building, proposed a six-foot fence. I suggested an eight. I'm not married to just an eight. I could even ask for a 10, possibly. I think in all this, I need to do some site visits. Comcan has been nice enough to facilitate one, which hopefully I'm going to do by the end of this week in Brockton. I'd like to get to at least one of the one before I make a final proposal on what's here. We talked about the clearing of the vegetation and the trees all the way around. That's just in classes that I've been to on crime prevention, you know, the more sightlines you can get looking at it, or if you ever have to respond to a call, you can see what's going around. Actually, that's included in the state portion of the security measures, that you can't have any vegetation around the building where somebody could possibly hide. So, they've been very receptive to that. I know in the back of the property, we'd have to look at. I know the neighbors might want some kind of screening back there, so we have to take a look at how far back that would be, or if possibly some kind of screening could be done with the fence material. That's going to be there. One thing that'll come up, I know in earlier discussions, I had suggested some type of a Sally port where deliveries could be put into a secure garage and then the garage door closed. I think in looking at the original site, there was a door there that lent itself to that taking place. That was changed when we got this most recent variation and, you know, we asked why and I guess there is some space constraints in the first floor of the property and taking a tour, you'll see that it is very tight. That's where they located the vault. So, we also talked about, there's another garage to the north side of that as part of the existing business. There would be some problems because there is a common stairway that leads to the outside that goes up to the second floor that the landlord is using. All things being equal, I'd like to see it take place, but I'm not sure whether it's viable on the existing site. I'm not sure if anybody else requires that type of security. Like I said, it's something that I'd like to see there. I'll know more when I visit a couple of existing sites, what the other businesses that are already open are using for that type of security for their deliveries. So, I'll have some more information on that when we see each other again. If there's any questions that you'd like to ask, feel free.
Mr. Stein.
I just have a really basic question. The product itself is federally illegal, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, how does that play into, like, your role as a law enforcement officer? Just, I'm sorry, just basic, you know, law question, I guess.
We're not enforcing the federal law. And I'm sure, if you've done the research, that's why banks aren't doing business. So, currently, until the law's changed, this is an all cash business.
So, if your officers see people leaving this building with a federally illegal thing, they're not compelled, your officers are not compelled to or required to enforce a federal law? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
We would enforce the local consumption bylaws if that was taking place.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have questions for the chief? Yeah, Mr. Mills?
First of all, thank you, chief, for coming and appreciate all you do and the rest of the department to begin with.
Thank you.
You know, if you can pass that along to the rest of the police department, that'd be great. I had a question that you might, I was looking at the map itself. I didn't see anything for disposal trash or anything, knowing the products that are going to be going through here. Not saying the patients necessarily are going to be going through the trash at the facility, but I could see maybe others that might be interested if something got thrown away in error. Is that something not necessarily that you're looking at where the trash is, but maybe could be addressed? Is it, has that been an issue in the past at other locations, or, you know, why isn't there a trash, a dumpster or anything on the location, or what's going to happen with it?
Just for the product, I think that's what you're most concerned with. I'm sure they'd have to locate a dumpster somewhere on the property, but the product is guided by a whole bunch of state guidelines on how they're to dispose of it. There's pages and pages on it. I'm sure that they could probably give you a more detailed breakdown of it, but that's, there's a whole process that they have to go through.
And one other question, when it's fencing, I'm thinking just security in general, you're not suggesting a fence in front of the driveway when the facility's closed, are you?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenks.
Good evening, chief. I'm not sure if this question is best addressed to you or to one of the applicants, but I'm interested in what, if any, alarm systems are proposed for this building and specifically, is there any alarm directly to the police department?
I'm sure they could give you a much more detailed answer. I have a document in my records. It's 52 pages long, so I'm sure they could be more detailed. But, from what I understand, there's a panic alarm hooked up. There'll also be a video system that the police can tap into, so if anything was going on, you know, we could see exactly what was going on and just, you know, probably everything but the bathrooms has some type of video camera on it. It has DVR capabilities that they have to save for, I believe, 90 days. There's specs on the alarm. There's specs on having a backup alarm if that alarm goes down. So, that's all mandated by the state. Like I said, I'm sure if you wanted a more detailed answer, they could probably get into it.
The video coverage, is that internal as well as external?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll keep you, we'll keep you there for a second, chief. Anyone else with any questions of our police chief? Yes, sir. Need a microphone? Yeah?
Thank you. So, I'm a resident of Flag Road. I have just a quick question on, as a follow-up to, I think it was Mills' question.
Could you state your name, sir?
Sure. My name is Jonas Linden. I'm a resident of Flag Road. So, you mentioned that you're not enforcing the federal law. That's because you're a local police officer of the town, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, who would enforce the federal law?
Federal agents.
Okay. And where would they be located? Is that like the state police or?
No, it's FBI or any of the federal ICE or Customs or DEA.
Okay. So, question to, back to the chairman then. So, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that this needs more information and in particular to that question, and I don't want to be part of a town where we have illegal activities going on. And I also want to have more clarification on the type of activity that this has. So, these are just additional questions. For example, I think the gentleman over here from the new firm referenced that the first floor is going to be used for R and D. I'm not exactly sure what that means. So, I need more information on this.
Do you know the answer to that, chief?
It's just the sales.
Okay. So, it's going to be like an open, it's going to be like a, you can go and buy like in a supermarket or what?
No, it's very, it's medical marijuana. So, there's, there's a whole system of checks and balances on who can even actually enter the facility. You have to be a patient, a caregiver. You have to have a prescription. You have to go through checkpoints. They have security on staff checking these documents. It's all laid out in the state's document of what they require of these facilities.
Excellent. So, I just want to bring that to the planning board's attention, that I don't want to have Southborough be known as one of the few towns in the state of Massachusetts where an illegal substance can be, you know, whatever, however you use it over there.
I guess I'll just say for the record that this is the third stop of many with the town officially. First stop was with the selectmen and the selectmen, what's the term, Paul? The non-opposition? The selectmen issued a letter of, or they voted and confirmed that with a letter of non-opposition to this type of a facility in the town of Southborough. Did I say that right? We have Selectman Semino in the room along with Selectman Shea.
Good evening.
Yeah. In terms of the legality in federal versus state law, I mean, this is not only permitted pursuant to state law. We are not permitted to disallow it, except for certain circumstances. So, in terms of having a zoning bylaw that allows for it in limited circumstances, that is exactly in keeping with state law. I do have one other comment, Mr. Morris, since I'm standing here, in relation to something that the chief has said. So, can I keep going?
Right. This is the planning board. We
Understood.
We let, we let, you know, full latitude and I know that Comcan is going to have to be very patient with us
Yes.
Because we're all learning. Mr. Semino?
Yeah, but as to the site plan review that you're here to conduct, and by the way, thank you all for what I know will be a thorough review. One of the differences in the new plan versus the originally submitted plan that is significant to me personally is what was formerly going to be a secure delivery through a closed garage. I understand that the point was made just a couple of minutes ago, that maybe there's not enough room either on this site or in the existing structure to do that. I'd like you guys to be careful in your consideration of that. And if we cannot, and I'm thinking both about delivery of product, but also exchanging and moving cash, and if we cannot do that in an enclosed space, I'd like to hear more about how it is going to be done in the alternative. I would also add that with regard to taking down the vegetation along the perimeter of the property, the chief did mention that there should be, you know, that he's sure the neighbors, and I'm also sure, and I'm sure you're sure, the neighbors will want some screening. Obviously, we have a balancing act to do there, security being the most paramount. So, with regard to the vegetation, with regard to the secure garage, I, you know, if the chief is happy, I'm happy. But, I urge you to consider those things vis-à-vis whether ultimately the site is appropriate if we can't get them.
Thank you. And the second stop after the selectmen on this permitting process was with the zoning board of appeals. And it was the ZBA that issued the special permit for this facility. So, now we're in that third stop, which is the site plan review, where we get into the details. And as you can tell from the presentation, we're getting into lighting, parking, security and all of those pedestrian and vehicle movements, landscaping. So, that's where we're at, but I think that because this is such a unique facility and it's new to us, that we're going to have to, you know, be allowed to have some latitude in our questions, even if they may go beyond site, pure site plan. Anyone else for the police chief? Mr. Shea. Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Shea, 17 Pineville Lane, also on the board of selectmen. So, just follow up on Paul's comment earlier. I had also sent a letter to you this morning, which I trust you received, and if you mentioned it earlier, I apologize I was late getting here. But also touching upon the change in security that's proposed, at least from the building layout plans that were online, that I reviewed over the last week or so. I had a discussion with Chief Paulus about that very issue, and as I understand, there are modifications that are being made to the building layout. I would hope that you would, I don't know if those plans have been available yet, if they've been shared with anyone, but I would hope that you would at least continue the hearing so that everybody can have a chance to look at the revised building layout. And also, you know, just make sure that you do your due diligence in asking why the change from the secured garage bay was made. Thank you.
Actually, we covered a little bit of that, Mr. Shea, because a lot of people, as I stated earlier, just before you got here, that have actually expressed concern, like genuine concern to me, that the planning board was going to open this hearing tonight and then just take a vote. And this, as I said, this is the planning board. We have a long history of a thorough review, making sure that all the appropriate people, the neighbors, the publics, public safety, public officials are able to speak, express their concerns and their opinions. And if it takes more than one meeting, which this will, or more, then that's what it's going to take. We're not driven by the clock. We're driven by the quality of the product and the information. And until this board is ready to, has enough information to take a vote, then we won't. I drove by a facility today in Southborough that's been there about 20 years, and that facility went under site plan review by the planning board. And it was basically a multi-use, kind of like a combination of a warehouse and a contractor's sections of this rather large building. And that site plan review took 12 months. Took one year for the planning board to get to the point where we could approve that site plan. Hopefully, this won't take that long, but I can tell you that if it does, that it won't be the first one. Anyone else for any, I'll go through the board if the board has questions relative to the plans. Mr. Jenks?
Are we releasing the chief first?
We're releasing you to your chair, chief.
Thank you.
There is a fairly large dumpster to the right of the building now. Is that the contractors and will that stay?
It's not going to stay, yes, the contractors. On the issue of trash, state has very stringent regulations about how you dispose of those types of products. The applicant doesn't see a lot of generation of just normal refuse. I will revisit the question of whether or not we need a dumpster on the property, but as of now, we're not proposing one. But, I'll talk again with the applicant on that topic.
Mr. Mills? So, I'm glad Mr. Semino and Mr. Shea brought up the secure location that was watching, knowing this was eventually going to come to us at some point if it got passed all the other boards. And the selectmen, I've been following this as the meetings have occurred throughout the town process. And I recall exactly that, that there was going to be a secure location. The car was actually going to come in, into the garage, be shut and be able to take out of the back of a lockbox in the minivan that's nondescript and doesn't have anything on it, and it's going to come in at alternating times and all that. So, there was going to be very discreet and be able to come right in. So, can you walk me through the process and show me how product is actually going to get in and if product's actually going to leave to, back to another facility, how it's going to happen, and same with the cash? Because without having that secure area or a garage door where you can lock it in, I'd be very concerned with it going in and out of just the front door.
Well, the issue of the garage bay became an issue of space. You know, when the applicant got to the point where they were doing detailed floor plans, you know, we have certain constraints. There's a mechanical room on that first floor. There's two bathrooms on that first floor. So, it kind of restricts how the space can be configured. At present, it is proposed that it will come through the front door. The front door is a secured door. When you go to the front door, as was discussed by the chief, the building's fully secured. There's cameras outside. There's cameras inside. When you approach the front door, you have the buzz. The security person checks your identification and then lets you in or doesn't let you in. So, the way it is intended now is that that would happen through that front door. You know, the bringing of products to and from the site is done in, you know, nondescript vehicles. It's people who look like anyone else who might be visiting the site. Same with the site, same with cash coming and going from the facility. Um, I will say this, we will, um, I'll sit with the applicant and we'll generate a letter that we can submit to the board, just outlining the reasons why this particular aspect of the application changed from initial discussions, and we'll submit that to you so that you can ponder that, and, uh, we can talk about it some more at the next meeting.
With all due respect, I think, um, for this facility, knowing that most people are gonna be going in probably to purchase a product and come out with something most likely smaller than a duffel bag, I think it would be very obvious if a delivery was being made or if cash was exiting the building. Um, so I, again, I'd be very curious on how that's gonna happen, and regardless, there's only so many hours in the day, you watch that facility for a couple of weeks, you could probably figure out timing, but then, and I'm concerned about security.
Understood. Um, Valerio could probably speak to this better than I, but I, I don't think that an operation like that with an enclosed garage bay is typical, I don't think that's at any of the RMDs, um, in, in the area. Um, again, we'll kinda lay out for you why that changed. We do have, the applicant has a comprehensive security plan, it's gonna be fully vetted with the chief, um, they have, uh, security personnel, the building's monitored twenty-four seven by a security firm, uh, and that, that, a, a security firm will handle the transport of these products.
But you do understand, I think that's a major change compared to what the, the other committees and boards-
We understand that, yes.
...were told before we got to this point.
Yes. Valerio, come on, just.
Sure.
Thanks, Dan.
Wait a second. Sorry. I wanna say something first.
Hi, Mark Rosenfeldt, I'm CEO of Comcast. Uh, when I first met, and I'm not, I'm not here to say that when I first met with the Board of Selectmen and the initial meetings, that that was my intent, was that we would make use of this garage door before we did the layouts and saw what all the other, uh, dispensaries were doing and, and best practices and, and safety, but to, um, to make a statement that I presented that at every board prior to this, that would've, that, that was fully discussed at ZBA, and it was specifically not made a condition of the special permit, which is where it ordinarily would be. We talked about, we talked about coming and going and, and not having a, a, a Brink's truck pull up with a target on it, and not having uniformed, uh, officers and, uh, drawing a lot of attention to, uh, the comings and goings, and, you know, in terms of safety practices, having people sort of blend in and, and come and go. But, uh, again, Dan will, you know, will fully address it and, and the changes that led to it, uh, and Valerio can obviously speak to, uh, practices throughout the industry, so.
Mr. Chairman members, thank you. Valerio Romano, 109 State Street in Boston. Um, so just quickly on the cash issue, uh, when this program first rolled out in Massachusetts, uh, Century Bank, uh, actually started taking these deposits, and at that point, uh, there was no debit or credit card processing, but now that's actually changed, and they will be doing, uh, credit and debit processing. It's not something that's known, uh, you know, very, very well and commonly throughout the industry so far in Mass. So ideally, we will be cut, cutting down significantly, uh, the amount of cash that's coming and going because, uh, we do plan on doing debit and credit card processing, uh, and I know some of the existing RMDs in Mass are in fact doing that. Um, Century Bank, like I said, is taking the deposits and is working with the applicants on making sure that those plastic forms of non-cash, uh, can go through. So, we feel like that certainly contributes to the security of the facility, people going in and out. Next, I know, uh, recently I was able to speak with, uh, the founder of In Good Health, which is operating in Brockton, and, uh, hopefully the, the chief, as he mentioned, will be able to get over there for, um, a site visit. Now, In Good Health is what they call a co-located facility, so it's both cultivation, processing, and dispensing all within the same building. So this issue of delivery of product, uh, doesn't come up as much, although cash still will have to be taken from In Good Health, uh, that, the, the delivery of product doesn't exist in that particular facility. So hopefully I'll have an opportunity to work with the chief on visiting potentially some other locations like Brookline, uh, Salem, uh, Northampton, uh, which are not, uh, co-located facilities, and the chief can get a sense as to, uh, the security in, in facilities like this that are, that are separated out from their cultivation and processing facility and make a determination as to whether, uh, having the, the, uh, the vehicles roll into, uh, a secure garage bay is necessary. If you take a look at what's happening, you know, in other, other, other parts of the, uh, other industries in, in the Commonwealth, uh, if you look at a Walgreens or a CVS, uh, typically they don't have, uh, garage bays that eighty-milligram OxyContin's are getting delivered into, uh, and so I think that, you know, really making it seem like cannabis is, is all of a sudden gonna be this incredible safety risk, uh, when it may not exist in other, in other, uh, you know, in, in, in other activities throughout the Commonwealth, it, it may not be quite that bad. That being said, of course, we wanna do what the chief thinks is proper for security, and I know that, uh, as the chief said, when it comes to line of sight, when it comes to actually really clearing out and doing a huge project around that building and making it so that officers can drive all the way around, entry, exit, uh, we're working with the chief, we're closing up the, the stairway inside, so anything we can do, uh, it's, it's also a function and a constraint of the space in, in the building, and we're doing everything we can to accommodate the chief, and I, I wanna see, make sure that the chief gets to visit as many sites as possible throughout the Commonwealth and, and can make the, the most informed decision. So, I hope that helps to answer it somewhat.
Um, are you, you're really trying to compare a single product site to a Walgreens and a CVS? You're talking about one product type you're gonna be selling out of this location compared to a CVS or a Walgreens that sells thousands of different articles, and only a handful are probably controlled substance. Really?
Uh, well, for a couple of reasons. One is we're actually also gonna be selling, uh, vaporizers, uh, other, other methods of ingestion, so it's more than just cannabis going in and out of that front door, there's actually, you know, a ho- a host of other products that patients, there was gonna be educational materials that we're gonna provide, we have, we have a triple mandate basically from the Department of Public Health, and that's to provide medicine, educational materials, and related products like vaporizers. So there is more than just cannabis, so every, every parcel that goes in and out of that site, there isn't a controlled substance in. But I, your point is well-taken, Mr. Mills, I, I, I get it, a, a, you know, a nefarious person who's just sitting outside of CVS or a Walgreens wouldn't necessarily know which package coming in contains a controlled substance, as they would be much far more likely to guess with our site, absolutely. Uh, that being said, I mean, you know, as far as, uh, putting together, uh, a proper safety proposal, uh, security proposal, as far as delivery is concerned, uh, you know, I'd like to echo what, uh, Dan said about us really coming together and, and writing up a, a form of proposal for the board, uh, in a letter that, you know, we can, we can go back and forth on and can really encapsulate, uh, the proposal, and I think that that would be particularly valuable, uh, you know, sometime after the chief makes, uh, further, you know, tours of other sites in the Commonwealth and, and sees what they're doing there and, and helps to, uh, come up with further suggestions. So, um, you know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of both, uh, you know, we absolutely want to accommodate the security, uh, but if you take a look at, you know, what's happened so far in the Commonwealth with the existing dispensaries, there's been, there haven't been any of these security concerns that, or, uh, security issues arisen so far, the concerns are certainly there, this is a polarizing issue, we get that, and so we're gonna do everything we can to accommodate, uh, you know, Southborough. Uh, just, just, I don't have, you know, the perfect answer for you, you know, verbally right now, because we wanna kit, sit and work with, uh, Dan and, uh, and the rest of the team. Yep.
I would ask the question, Valerio, do any of the existing non-co-located facilities have a drive-in? Do you know?
I, I, I don't know the answer, I don't believe that, for instance, I do not believe that Brookline does, uh, that's probably the, got the most traffic, um, I haven't been over to Northampton, um, so I don't know the answer, and that's why I'm inviting the chief to, you know, to see for himself how, how it is, and certainly between now and the next hearing, we will also, you know, go around and make sure and figure out that answer definitively for you.
I hate to think that the reason for not doing it is because no one else does. It sounds like a great idea.
Mr. Mills?
So, um, I think we beat that one enough. Um, moving on, my next question, uh, relates to parking, and I'm curious, the time it takes to actually process someone through the building from the point of entry as they go through, um, what, what you think the timeframe is gonna be to purchase, um, and exit the building, um, you know, go through the security, check 'em in, make sure, yeah, you got a valid card, um, meander around, figure out what they're gonna take, you know, how many, so of the, well, I think you have a total of twenty-seven spots on the original...
We have a total of twenty-one proposed on the new plan.
Yeah, so, like, how, how many people we think are actually gonna be going through there and the time-
We have some, uh, traffic data, uh, our traffic consultant on another project, uh, investigated another dispensary for traffic patterns, so we, I can provide that to you in a letter, um, prior to your next meeting, just to give you a flavor for it, but it's not, it's not a great deal of traffic, it's not, it's not what you might think.
Again, I'm not, I'm not asking-
Valerio can speak to how long it takes.
It relates to traffic, but I wanna know how long it actually takes to process individuals.
Right, and Valerio can help you with that.
So the, the, there's a different, a couple of different types of individuals, a first-time patient who visits for the very first time will take longer to process because when they show up, they're provided a, a document that they have to acknowledge that they were provided, which gives them, you know, guidance on storage of cannabis and not operating heavy machinery and not operating vehicles and whatnot, and anything else the town of Southborough wants us to tell the patients, we're gonna make sure that they have that. So that takes a few extra minutes. Some patients initially might not know what strains of cannabis are good for their debilitating condition, uh, different conditions have different strains, high CBD, whatnot, CBN, uh, and so, uh, those patients will also potentially meet with, um, somebody who can consult with them on what's best for MS, what form of ingestion is best for their condition. Uh, so those first-time patients and early patients who don't know yet, uh, will take a little bit longer, um-
So what's the staffing plan gonna be to be able to handle those people?
They'll be-
Because then it relates to how many parking spots are already gonna be used up by the staff.
So there, there'll be some, one person onsite who can have those, uh, those interactions with first-time patients. Um, then after that, a patient will know, uh, typically what they want, and they'll be able to go in and out, uh, far more quickly, it's, so you get, the patient gets to the front door, you check their ID from the outside, they get into the Sallyport or Mantrap, uh, then you'll check two forms of ID, they'll come inside, they'll be allowed to make a purchase, and then they'll have to leave. There's no onsite consumption, there's, there's nothing else, so, uh, there, they'll, there's gonna be a security agent onsite to enforce that, and they'll, they'll leave at that point. So first-time patients certainly will take a little bit longer, uh, because they may want that, uh, consultation, but after that, typically, the patient will know what they want and come and go.
So if I counted correctly, we're talking a minimum of four people onsite at all times, one for the person for, uh, to first-time consultant, I'm thinking one for the, operate the front door, one to do sales, and one, security agent.
It sounds about right, yes.
There are four parking spots gone right there.
There, there may be four parking spots gone, or potentially they, they'd carpool or they'd be shuttled in, um, you know, so it's, uh, you know, and that's something that I'll leave to, to, to the engineer as well to talk about the parking spots, but if, if, if we think that there, that creates a, a lack of parking, then we'll create an alternative method for bringing those people onsite.
We'll provide you with a, a breakdown, as I mentioned, of, uh, expected trips in a peak hour to the site, uh, and, you know, basically the breakdown now is maybe five or six spaces might go to employees, and then the rest, the other, you know, nine, eighteen, nineteen, oh, I'm sorry, fifteen, sixteen would go towards, um, patient parking, um, which we believe is, is ample for the use, uh, and it will of course vary throughout the day and depends on the day, but as I say, we have some data that we can share with you about, uh, how many trips a facility like this, a dispensary generates, uh, in a peak hour, for example. So we'll provide a, a letter to you on that topic.
So I appreciate that, but again, I'm looking specifically to just the time it takes to process patients in and out.
So it, it's gonna depend on the patient, but I think it might go anywhere from ten minutes to twenty minutes.
Well, it could be far shorter for, a returned patient who knows what they want will come in, they'll make a purchase, and they'll leave. How long does it take to go to any retail establishment when you know exactly what you want? Not long, three, four minutes. A first-time patient who really wants to sit down with somebody could be that twenty minutes plus of really sitting down and going through what their debilitating condition is. I mean, this is really a medical program, and they're absolutely dedicated to making sure patients have the best treatment possible with this medicine. So that first-time patient who really wants a consultation, we're gonna have to spend a little time with them and make sure that they, getting what, what's best for their debilitating condition, but after that, when you know what you want, you come in, you get it, there's no, everything's prepackaged, pre-labeled when they get to the site, so there isn't some, you know, five-minute process of putting together the package and the labeling for the patient, it's ready to go. So, uh, you know, so, you know, it can be extremely short for patients who know what, what they want, but longer for ones who want the education.
Mr. Jenks?
Do patients ever make an appointment to come in, um, or do they just walk in on the urge?
Yes, um, Mr. Jenks, so, when you think about an appointment system for one of these dispensaries, it actually sounds like a great idea, uh, because you think about a doctor's office, and that you call your doctor ahead of time and you make an appointment, and you're not, you're not seen by that doctor until, until you have it, but unfortunately, what the appointment system does is it just gets people to come there, not have an appointment, and sit and make the call, uh, you know, try to make an appointment right then. So it's actually just people coming, uh, and being processed, you know, as quickly and as efficiently as possible, and then being required to leave the site.
Do you know of anyone who's ever tried that system?
We're, we are not appointment-based, this was well, um, discussed, uh, during the ZBA, again, at the special permit process, um, appointment-based, uh, programming defeats the purpose, we feel, to help patients, to give them access, uh, it leads to, as Valerio said, people pulling up and trying to make an appointment or circling around, trying to wait for their appointment to, uh, for that time to approach. Uh, we were adamantly opposed to an appointment-based, um, service model, uh, we made that clear at the special permit process, and it was not incorporated into, uh, the zoning board of appeals, uh, conditions on that permit.
Okay, you, you do understand this is a different process than the ZBA?
Absolutely, sir.
And, and you are going to get some duplicate questions raised?
Absolutely, I was, I was, I was, uh, attempting to, um, Valerio is full of knowledge, and, uh, I want to keep, uh, all sides focused on the, the matters at hand, so, when you bring up the question of appointment-based, uh, dispensing, it's, it's something that was considered and, um, decided against, at least from our point of view.
Okay, let me go back to my question, do you know of anybody who has tried it? Are, are there any studies out, or...
Uh, and this will be part of, uh, the review, I think hopefully the chief will be able to talk about this, I believe that when Salem opened, they opened with an appointment-based model, so, um, and, you know, I can hopefully, uh, schedule, uh, you know, an opportunity for the chief to meet with Chris Edwards, who's the founder of Alternative Therapies Group, and maybe they could have a chat about, about how that's rolled out. Um, so, uh, so I believe when Salem opened, they did, uh, start with an appointment-based, uh, model, I don't know if they're still doing it or not, um, but just the nature of the, the way the industry works, it, it does create more issues than it might seem like it would from, at a, at a first glance at the, at the possibility.
But the home delivery services are basically appointment-based, because when I called to get more information, they said, "Well, all are, we don't have any other slots today." So, and I'd be curious why you'd be opposed to appointment-based, um, it could lead to the impression that this could be a knee-jerk reaction, that, "Hey, I gotta go out and get some more, um, medicine," when, you know, where you can't do that with any other prescription, really, I mean, it's, it's, you need a certain prescription for a, a certain amount or certain dosage for a certain period of time, so I'm curious why you'd be opposed to, uh, appointment-based in that case.
Well, I mean, so now, this might be more of, you know, a better, um, comparison to a CVS and a Walgreens, you need a prescription, you need a, an appointment potentially to go speak with your physician about, uh, uh, getting a prescription or a certification or recommendation for cannabis, but you don't need a prescription to go to CVS and pick, I mean, an appointment to go to CVS and pick up your prescription, so this might be a time where the analogy fits better than, than, than the, you know, how we saw previously when I used it, but when somebody goes to a CVS, they don't need an appointment to, to, to use their prescription, so-
Agreed.
So it's, it's sort of, i- i- it's analogous to that, if that helps. Uh, I, you know, Mr. Morris, early, the chairman's, you know, made a point where there's gonna be a lot of questions that might not be necessarily directly on point to the issues that are germane to the, to what, what's in front of us, and, and I know my, my client, my clients might say, "Valerio," you know, but we'll do our best to answer anything that, that the board has for you, you know, just to, you know, be fully- for you, you know, just to, you know, be fully transparent and edify everybody about how this works.
We're all learning.
Exactly.
So, and I know the question came up about security, so not that, I mean, I'm willing to pass the baton after this, just wanna make a statement. So I guess in the next plan to have a detailed layout of what the security's gonna be, what you think the illumination's gonna be, the hours of illumination, and all that, because that's definitely something that neighbors are gonna be concerned about, and when it comes into the height of the fence that the chief said he'd, he'd be willing to even go to ten feet, you know, I think that's gonna be another question, you know, are, are there gonna be cameras pointed at different areas of the parking lot that some of the neighbors might think are, like, concerned that could be pointed at their, at their own homes, or something like that, you know, so it's gonna, there's, I'm not saying, I mean.
We can provide.
Just preparing you, you're gonna need to be able to show what it's gonna look like from different angles, and what different other abutters are gonna see, because I know if I live next to or abutted this, that's what I'd be asking for, so if you wanna expedite this as quickly as possible, to get as detailed as possible, what that, those different views are gonna look like.
We can provide you with some baseline information on the security protocols, obviously, we're not going to submit specific detailed security plans in a public forum like this.
I understand.
That's something that will be worked out with the police chief in detail, but we can provide you with generic information, again, cameras outside, cameras inside, the portions of the facility that will be covered by cameras, we can address all of that in writing to you, so you'll have an understanding of, generally speaking, what the protocols are, and then the, the details will be worked through with the chief on an ongoing basis, not, not just at the beginning, but through the entire operation of the facility.
Good for now, Mr. Chen.
Anyone else on the planning board?
Mr. Stein. Is the current owner of the building Unicorn Realty Trust here?
Yes.
Sir, could you tell us a little bit about your business and your use of this property?
Mr. Picardi. Good evening. My name's William Picardi, Picardi Construction, we bought the property in eighty-nine and opened one of the first remodeling design showrooms in the country, in the downturn, and it really saved our butt for the next ten years. We now have, we have a forty-four-year client history, and we're doing second generation, so we don't really need people we don't know coming in, selling a product, we pretty much deal with all referral customers and existing customers. So the showroom was closed, it was open seven days a week when we first opened it for almost ten years, so we closed it and it's being used as storage right now. We use the building upstairs for a bookkeeper that comes in from seven to two, does our bookkeeping, the crews go right to the jobs in the morning, they don't meet at the showroom. I go to the showroom in the morning at five and leave by six, and go back in at night to do paperwork. So it's been a great location for us, it's served a great purpose in the nineties, and now we're trying to get better use out of the building, basically.
So if I can just read that back to you, you have a single employee that occupies or uses the upstairs from seven AM to two PM, you yourself only go there for an hour a day in the morning?
In the morning, yeah, because I gotta get out to the field.
And that's, you see that being permanent, in terms of your?
We're actually trying to curtail the business from general contracting to deck specialty, to reduce the, the amount of subcontractors involved and stuff like that, 'cause it's getting more difficult, and my son's taking over the business, so we're trying to curtail that, to simplify it a little bit. So the showroom, we have deck railings showing on the second floor, but we do most of our sales through photographs, and again, referral business, so they really don't need to come, once in a while a customer will come to the showroom to pick up a sample, but very seldom, and hasn't happened in the last year or two at all.
You have had no customer visits in the last year or two?
No.
Zero.
Yeah, we bring, it's not really, it's, it's a storehouse now, you can't show anything downstairs, it's all storage, so.
Right, but I, I think you said the upstairs was?
It's just office space, there's not really, there's not showroom space upstairs, it's three offices.
So on the plan that I was provided with, there's, it says for basically half of the lower unit, it says no work slash other tenant space. When?
Oh, that's the garages? Is that, I haven't seen the plan.
Yeah, where it says garage slash storage.
Yeah, there's four garage doors across the back, one of them goes with the tenant space right next to the showroom, that's the one they're discussing now with the loading and other.
Other tenant, does, does other tenant refer to the proponent tonight, or does other tenant refer to?
Must be me, must be me.
Refers to Mr. Picardi.
Must be the owner, if that, those are my three garages, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just using, you don't intend to take on a third tenant?
No, we need that space.
And that's?
And we use it for storage of materials, it's, if you went over there, the inside's full.
I just wanna establish there'll be two tenants, period.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate your input on that.
Anybody else?
Sorry, so the rest of my questions were related to parking, but we're kinda tabling that for now, if I'm not mistaken, because you're coming back with more details on traffic and number of visits, and time per visit, and all that stuff.
That's correct.
Trash is, is tabled for now, right? I just kinda wanna review.
That's correct.
Delivery of product and removal of cash is tabled.
We're gonna provide you with some additional documentation on that.
Security's tabled for now.
We, as I say, we've submitted to everyone, we've submitted to the other boards, I believe, the security plan for the facility, but we'll submit it to you as well, so you'll have that in your file.
So now, I mean, as far as landscaping goes, it sounds like the chief kinda basically wants there to be as little landscaping as possible, or, or is there going to be a revised landscaping plan as well?
Two different issues here, one is that the, the state regulations basically prohibit shrubs or trees of any substance around the, the building itself proper, and then the chief would like the areas around the sides opened up so that he has full visibility, he and his staff has full visibility of the, the main area of the site, I, I wouldn't, I don't anticipate that we will do any clearing back down here on the slope, we did talk about that with the chief. I don't know that there's a need for a landscape plan, I suppose that's something that the board should, let me know if you, if you're expecting one, if you think you need one.
I mean, I, I'm a relative, you know, I've only been on the board for, I think, a year and a half, but most, the site plans that I've seen always have a, a landscape plan that I've been.
This being an existing facility, you know, if you're generating, if you're building a new building, understandably, we would provide obviously a landscape plan.
And I'm just, it's just my own question, and then, are we gonna have a Fussin' O'Neill review of this site plan?
They have already.
I think they asked for a landscaping.
So there's a question there, I think they deferred it to the board, and, and I think the board, I would ask the board to.
They haven't had a chance to review the Fussin' O'Neill.
Let us know, yeah, it came in today. I'd ask the board to let us know if you, if you want some kind of a landscape plan. Again, we're not really intending to change the site landscape, except for the, the removal of these trees along the left side of the property, there's not a lot of other, they're, basically the only other site landscaping is around here, and in this little entry area, and it's mostly grass, this little gazebo is proposed to be removed, a walkway in a gazebo, now we just go back to a grass area. So the, the landscape issues are not very extensive, I guess is my point, and if it's something that the board is looking for, I'd ask you to let me know, and that we could, so we could take some action on that.
We're gonna go over the long list of homework items that you have, so that we're all clear on what's gonna be presented between, to the, you know, to the board between now and, and the continued public hearing. Did you, were you all set, Mr. Stein?
Thank you.
Mrs. Lutrell, did you want to?
I have no questions at this time.
Does anyone else have, I, I've got some correspondence here that I'm gonna read, it's eight fifteen, we started a little after seven, we have, I see our other appointments are here, so it's gonna take a few minutes to read, read or refer to some of these letters that we've received, so I do plan to read them, but before I do that, are there any questions or concerns, comments? Mr. Semino.
I think that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping to be at your next hearing, but I don't know for sure that I will, so I do wanna say, as I, as you're about to wrap it up, two things. One is that, you know, what other facilities are doing is certainly an important question, but I don't believe it's dispositive, there aren't that many of them, so figuring out what's the best practice in such a sort of nascent area is something we all have to do. And I think Mr. Jenks mentioned something along those lines, I appreciate that. The second thing is, with regard to the site itself, I heard a couple of times, something or this or that doesn't fit on this site. When it comes to security, if, if, if what the chief needs doesn't fit on the site, that doesn't change the fact that it's what the chief needs, so I think we gotta find a way to make it fit, if that's what the chief needs, and I'm not telling you all anything you don't already know, but I just wanna make sure everybody in the room hears that. So thank you again.
Actually, earlier when you spoke, Mr. Semino, you mentioned how you, you felt that the chief was happy, and I, I was going to mention that I have seen him happier.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't know that he's happy or not, he might be completely happy, what I did say, Mr. Morris, was if the chief is happy, I'm personally happy, but that, that's for him to say.
And we heard the chief speak that, you know, he, he's still, and I'm extremely impressed with his work on this, and, and making sure that he makes informed decisions and makes informed recommendations relative to the security and the safety there, and that's obviously ongoing. So I agree that the chief has to be way beyond happy, he has to be extremely happy, he has to be at the point where we're all happy, and we'll get there, I, I hope. I had a couple, if, is there anything else from anyone? Yes, ma'am?
Karen Schimkitz, Limbrook Road, my field is commercial real estate, twenty-five years in reviewing large-scale commercial projects, as well as medium and small, that would include familiarity with zoning and setbacks. I know there's been citizen concern about setbacks, and I do remember speaking at the last town meeting, not this past one, but the one before, holding up an article by the Boston Herald, front page article, where Bill Evans, the new police, or then-new police commissioner in Boston, I believe the headline was "It's a Joke," and was very concerned about introducing medical marijuana or marijuana to communities, on top of existing drug-related problems, because to some, it's viewed as a gateway drug. So in terms of considering setbacks, you know, standard setbacks might be a thousand feet, it would put it out of a range of schools, that's a deep concern on the part of the citizens, wanting to protect their children, and limiting the hours. So I would look seriously at what Bill Evans has to say in Boston, he's a terrific, terrific police commissioner, can't say enough good things about him, and if the state has safety concerns, I think we should have those same concerns and review what those are. With regard to setbacks, I would, I believe there's a citizen petition that had, was introduced at town meeting, this past town meeting, and I'm not sure the status of that, but I'd ask you to relook and reconsider, thank you.
I, I guess I'll read these letters, and then we'll go over the homework assignment that you've committed to. I'm gonna read these, I think, in the order in which we received them, the first one was last Thursday, it's an email with a letter attached, it's from Marnie Houlihan, she lives on Twenty-Sixth Clifford, and she's, the email is indicating to, was sent to the planning board members, that she's written a letter, and that she'd have it, like to have it reviewed tonight, on the eighteenth. So this is to members, to the planning board members. On Monday, July eighteenth, you are scheduled to review the proposed site plan for the medical marijuana facility at two fifty-five Turnpike Road. Unfortunately, I have rented a vacation home for the week and will not be in town to attend the meeting. I'm utilizing the written letter to document my questions and concerns and requests that this board consider my comments in your review, the marijuana facility proposed at two fifty-five Turnpike Road. As you know, I'm a very strong opponent of this facility located within a thousand feet of a school, effectively fostering, fostered a near-unanimous vote at town meeting in April two thousand sixteen to change the zoning. The applicant used a loophole called an A and R to free zoning and essentially set up shop where they are not wanted. It is imperative that the planning board assure safety for the neighboring residents and protect our school-aged children from any potential diversion of the product intended to be sold at the facility. As I reviewed the application for the site plan submitted by COMCAN, I had several questions that I would like this board to address. First one is, the lot does not meet many of the minimum frontage requirements in our Highway Business District zoning bylaw, one seventy-four dash eighty-five, and then there's a table here that lists the zoning parameter, lot area, lot frontage, and so on, and then there's numbers. I have specific safety and traffic concerns related to the frontage and the mere twenty-nine point seven feet for which cars to pull in and out of Route Nine. All customers will be arriving by car, since there is no safe access for pedestrian traffic. The lot can park eighteen cars per the submission. I would like the applicant to provide several assurances that safety and traffic patterns will not be affected by opening a medical marijuana facility at this location. When the lot is full, will cars wait on Route Nine? How will this impact current traffic flow, patterns and potential hazards on Route Nine? When the lot is full, will drivers be directed to circle the facility by taking a right-hand turn at Deerfoot Road, a right on Clifford Street, and a right on Parkerville Road to re-access the facility? If yes, how will the applicant control for the overflow? How will neighbors and schools be assured that they will not be overridden with increased traffic and safety issue? How many employees will be on the site at the facility? How many parking spaces will employees consume? I want to see evidence of the business plan for operations. What is COMCAN's estimate of daily transactions? When will most transactions take place? Can they present a mitigation plan, such as offering home delivery services, to lower the impact of traffic and safety concerns? I want to see COMCAN's forecast for business and modeling purposes. I also want COMCAN to acquire data from other marijuana dispensaries on average customers served per day, cycle of daily transactions, and COMCAN's plan for accommodation of such transactions. How will COMCAN allow for emergency vehicle access with a twenty-nine point seven foot, this is inch, but I think it's foot, entrance with a full parking lot? I must see a police and fire, fire report on the facility, and have them provide specific detail addressing my questions on full capacity of eighteen spots, and worst-case scenario assessments. How will the lot facilitate cash transactions, delivery and pickup of product if all of these are done at random times during business hours, and not impact overflow on Route Nine? The site plan makes no mention of installation of a protective site barrier around the perimeter of the facility. I expect that the applicant will be required to serve as both a protective bar, barrier to the adjacent residential neighbors, and to dissuade security breaches. We would expect the planning board to mandate, mandate a eight-to-ten-foot wall and/or solid fence surrounding the facility to protect the neighbors. The site plan indicates lighting that will not impact the surrounding abutters. Given the state's safety and security requirements for these facilities, it's not clear that they can illuminate the entire entirety of the facility and surrounding parking spaces without a negative effect on neighbors. The images utilized in the submission use peak summer months, when trees and bushes are at their most lush. As a result of twenty-six, as a resident of Twenty-Sixth Clifford Road, I am able to see the facility from November through April, and I'm very concerned that the lighting will have spillover into our residences and impact our quality of life. I would seek assurance that the lighting plan meets neighborhood- I would seek assurance that the lighting plan meets neighborhood requirements and is not overtly intrusive to taxpayers on Clifford Street. It's extremely unfortunate that I'm not able to attend in person for this meeting. I'm confident that the members of this planning board will address all of my questions and assure that Comcan provides data to support the plan and the feasibility of the lot, it's, of the lot meeting its business model. Thank you for your consideration of my comments. Sincerely, Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Street." Second one we received is from Steve Valentine. It's an email to Marnie Houlihan, and it's dated Friday, July 15th. Not sure if it says who Steve Valentine is. "Good morning. Please read this email in context and know that I have a great deal of respect for the board and appreciate your dedication to the town." Maybe I should read that again. "Please read this email in context and know that I have a great deal of respect for the board." We don't hear that too often. "And appreciate your dedication to the town. At the board meeting, Comcan and its representatives told the board and its residents didn't pose a risk to the community and cited examples such as, he, the lawyer, had researched that medical marijuana actually improved a person's ability to drive." I know this is going far afield, but this isn't very long. This is one of many examples of how the town has been lied to. "I can't even believe I have to address this. High-grade marijuana can have hallucinogenic-like effects on a person. We now know that Trooper Clardy's death was directly attributed to the use of medical marijuana. Please see the below open-source article or many others for reference. This is an example of the risk to public safety that our residents have cautioned you about." I'm a much better reader than it may appear, but these, this is an email, and it's, there's some typos here, and I want to make sure I'm saying the words properly.
There's a response he sends later. You can read that, too. He does a follow-up after this.
It only adds the, it only adds a line at the bottom, I think. And it still doesn't identify him as a resident or his address, with all due respect.
We now know that the doctor responsible for the distribution of this medical marijuana has been suspended because of abuse. This is an example of the diversion of the drug that will impact our community. Despite cautions from professionals from the medical, pharmaceutical, and public safety professions who have firsthand knowledge of the negative impacts of this facility, certain members of town leadership demonstrate unwavering support for this project. This is unsettling to say the least and is worthy of further consideration. Why? What does the town benefit from this facility? We do not have a grocery store and a 24-hour pharmacy convenience store prove to be controversial. Why is the town of Southborough responsible, responsibility to provide the region with a controversial and still illegal drug? Please know that the town has been misled and the majority of its residents do not want this. I am certain that if the town voted on Comcan today, on its own and not affixed to other matters, it would fail in an overwhelming manner. Our leadership, you, and the BOS are responsible for this facility." There's only two more.
I don't have one more.
I'll try to read better. I think, my glasses are all scratched, too, so I have to tip my head. "Dear members of the planning board, this is from Saftar Medina. It's dated today at 1:00 PM. Dear members of the planning board, I am writing to you in advance of your meeting on July 18th. As you are aware, concerns validated by data have been discussed in many forums with regard to the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary along Route 9 in Southborough. I would like to share even more troubling trends as you make your decisions about planning for such an operation. Unfortunately, our state has not been able to tightly regulate this industry as it should. As of May 2016, there were 27,212 medical marijuana cardholders in the state. There were 33,170 certifications to date. Here is a breakdown of the diagnosis that patients certified for medical marijuana Says DPH 2015. Says ALS 18, Parkinson's disease, 41, glaucoma, 227, HIV/AIDS, 265, Crohn's disease, 276, multiple sclerosis, 347, hepatitis C, 403, cancer, 756, and then there's a category "other," 22,130. It is this "other" category that should raise concern. Two physicians have recently had their licenses suspended because of improperly certifying thousands of patients for use of medical marijuana. Both doctors worked in offices whose sole purpose is to sign certificates allowing people to possess marijuana for medical purposes. These doctors demanded cash upfront for their clients. They did not require any approval from primary care doctors or specialists. No history was taken and no physical exam was done. The bottom line, anyone can claim that they have severe anxiety, chronic pain, insomnia, and receive a marijuana card. One of these docs even certified women who were visibly pregnant. Right now, there are only a handful of medical marijuana dispensaries in the state. There are dozens of companies competing for a limited number, 35, of licenses. A Southborough dispensary will sell to hundreds, if not more, people from surrounding towns. Many communities in our area have outright opposed such operations. As of now, in Massachusetts, operating dispensaries are in Salem, Air, Brookline, Brockton, and Northampton. Final certificates of registration have been issued in Newton and Quincy. This dispensary, especially if it is the only one in the area, could therefore potentially attract thousands of marijuana cardholders. Traffic on that area of Route 9 already makes for a messy drive, especially for local residents trying to drop off their children to school. Many of their clients will then turn into our side streets, providing access to our schools, and the opportunity to divert. Many will be driving impaired. They can easily consume products they purchase before getting behind the wheel, especially edibles. The site is small, with not enough parking spots either. The driveway to enter the site is small. Will this lead to even more of backup on Route 9? Will many just drive around until a parking spot is available? Will many be driving potentially impaired through the neighborhood streets close to our schools? It is the duty of this board to ensure the safety of our residents. Careful thought and consideration need be given as you decide on how to implement this next phase. Quite frankly, at this time, given the lack of regulation of medical marijuana sales in our state, we cannot move forward with planning for a medical marijuana dispensary at this location. Thank you again, and look forward to discussing this issue further. Sincerely, Saftar Medina, 19 Southwood Drive." And then, this is the last one I'm going to read. I'm going to refer to the Fosse &amp; O'Neil. This will be on the website tomorrow. We received the letter from Fosse &amp; O'Neil this afternoon at 4:30. I was able to look through it. There are 13 comments that we know that the proponent will take a look at and discuss with the, with our engineer. This is a letter from Brian Shea, one of our selectmen. He submitted it today. I also want to compliment Mr. Shea and Mr. Semino, and I know that there's only two here, but that's all for an unposted meeting. This is the type of, you know, interaction and support that I think the people in the town expected. You know, the planning board is here, but we also have members from other boards trying to, you know, participate and make sure that, you know, all of the, we're all working and pulling in the same direction. This is dated today. "I offer the following comments to the planning board on Comcan's application for major site plan approval. I note that these comments are offered as my own individual comments and are not intended to reflect the opinion of the Board of Selectmen. When Comcan was presenting to the Board of Selectmen on February 2, 2016, Comcan representatives included statements in their presentation materials with respect to deliveries of marijuana products that, quote, 'Deliveries will be in a secured garage bay. Medicine will never be delivered through the front door,' end quote. Comcan representatives discussed this security procedure with us during their presentation to the board, and noted during their presentation that the secured garage bay would also be used to facilitate movement of their product during home deliveries unless home deliveries were made directly from the growing facility." Growing facility is the place where the plants grow. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
"I specifically asked Comcan during the BOS presentation to the effect whether the layout of the existing building, which was constructed for a much different purpose than as a registered marijuana dispensary, would lend itself to the use as described in their presentation. Comcan responded in the affirmative. In its application to the zoning Board of Appeals, Comcan stated, quote, 'The use will be fully enclosed within the existing building, which will be renovated to suit the needs of the facility,' end quote. The building layout plan included in the submittal packet to the planning board specifically excludes the garage bay area as part of the building that will be available for use by Comcan, and there is no other secured garage bay shown to be constructed. The building layout plan contradicts the information presented to the Board of Selectmen in February, as there is no secured garage bay area connecting to the storage vault inside. Movement of product from the vault to the exterior of the building and from the exterior of the building to the vault will have to be done through the Q area, which is open to the public, and will likely need to be done through the front door. The concept of the secured garage bay was presented to and was discussed with the police chief and other town officials prior to the February 2, 2016, meeting with the Board of Selectmen. The secured garage bay concept was a contributing factor in both comments offered to the Board of Selectmen by the police chief and to my thought process with respect to security at the site. I recommend that the planning board have Comcan explain to the planning board the reasons for its change from the secured garage bay concept for product delivery. I understand that the building layout plan is undergoing revisions based on meetings that Comcan has had with town officials since submitting its application and supporting materials to the planning board. I also recommended, recommend that the planning board continue the public hearing until the revised building layout plan can be posted to the planning board's website and reviewed by interested parties in town. In addition, it is unclear to me from the site plan if perimeter fencing, at least on the east, north, and west sides of the property, are included on the site plan. I recommend that the planning board require the installation of fencing to secure those three sides of the site, if not proposed by Comcan on the site plan. Brian Shea, 17 Pine Cone Lane." And I will note that there isn't a single typo in this whole letter. So, I believe we will place these letters, including the one from Fosse &amp; O'Neil, on the website, so that the public can see the comments. You have this letter tonight? Did you get a copy?
From your peer-review consultant?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It came in, I think, at 4:30 or so?
Yeah, 4:30. So, I want to go over the homework, and then we'll discuss continuing the public hearing. So I have a list here. Are you going to give us a revised floor plan?
Yes.
A revised site plan?
Yes.
A lighting plan with the photometrics?
We're going to give you a revised photometrics plan, yes.
The plan is going to show either an eight-foot or a 10-foot fence. We expect that you will work that out with the chief and follow up on your commitment that if that's what the chief wants, a 10-foot fence, that's what will be placed on the plan and submitted to the ZPA for the variance.
Yes.
But the planning board needs to know what size fence...
The chief wants.
The chief wants.
Understood.
And then, the landscaping plan. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Yes, I believe, unless the board overrules, that we need a landscape plan. Very important.
Okay.
Were there others, Joe? Did you have any others?
We talked about security, some kind of a security plan.
We have a written security plan we'll submit.
Right. We just talked about that. And also, something about the traffic data.
Yes.
I think there's several questions about that.
Yep.
The flow and the number of parking required and the timelines.
Yes.
Specifically, the processing time for people.
Exactly.
Not just parking, but the processing time.
The different kinds of lines.
And also, obviously, a response to your peer-review consultant.
Yeah.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the security plan, I think if there are cameras that are going to be placed on the outside of the building and pointed in certain ways, I know I'm not a resident over there, but I highly suspect residents are going to want to know the angle of those, what the opportunity is for them to look at their homes, and things like that. So I know you're not talking about a detailed security plan in terms of all the bells and whistles, and someone could figure out how to cut it, cut it, cut into it or whatnot, but I'm just trying to cut off questions before they come. I would anticipate residents are going to want to know the angle of those cameras, and you're going to have to show some type of illustration on how it's not going to be peering into someone's bedroom window.
Is that the type of thing that is discussed with the chief, and those details are, have limited public access?
We will discuss the issue, I mean, I don't, we'll discuss with the chief what kind of information we should probably share with the board on that issue. I mean, we don't, obviously, we don't want to give anyone a roadmap for what the security plan is for silly, but let us discuss that with the chief, and then we can present something to you.
I'll call questions.
Understood.
Sir, you had a question?
So this is Jonas Lindon on Flag Road. I think with respect, you forgot a couple of the questions in the follow-up, and I just want to clarify. The first letter was from Marnie Houlihan regarding, she had questions regarding frontage requirements. I want to make sure that's addressed in the follow-up. And you did mention the traffic concerns and the safety concerns pulling in and out of Route 9. However, I want to make sure that's also addressed. And the third comment is the comment from Mr. Shea regarding the secure garage door. So according to his letter, that, Mr. Chairman, you just read, this was an exception from when this was reviewed in the February 2 meeting, so I want to make sure that's addressed as well, because I think that's a major concern. If this went through that board approval, and now we have a different type of layout, that's not the same as was approved. And then my final comment, again, as a concerned resident of this town, this particular location is less than a mile from the nearest public school. And as we just went through, and thank you again, Mr. Morris, for reading these letters, there may be increased traffic of various types of drivers, whether or not they have used this product that's going to be dispensed at this location, driving down Parkerville close to where schoolchildren are actually walking to, to school. Thank you very much.
So you'll see the letters that I read, or tried to read, and within those letters are those other items that the board will be looking for you to address. So if there's nothing else, I want to move on to... So, if there's nothing else, I want to move on to continuing the public hearing. Mrs. Chimpus.
Sorry, Karen Chimpus, Limbick Road. Just one last comment. I'm a little concerned at... I'm hoping the Board would back up to 30,000 feet and just, you know, reevaluate the concept and mostly the location. I mean, you've heard plenty of comments on traffic and this being a magnet. Now, getting your hands around that kind of volume and its impacts to Route 9, especially at peak commuter hours, I think it should be, you know, a deep concern. But the concept itself is, you know, is this good for the community? How does this impact, you know, safety? And of course, its proximity to schools. I mean, it's just, you know, go back to location. Is this stupid, or does this make sense? Are there better locations in town, or does this not belong in our community at all? Thank you.
So, the approval period for this major site plan review is August 16th. Expires on August 16th. Our next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for August 15th. We have a really high number of outstanding items at this point in the public hearing, all of which you've committed to address.
Mr. Chairman.
You've got a month to do that. However, would it be your intention to extend the approval period beyond August 16th?
We will grant the Board an extension. I'm not available anyways on the 15th, so probably whatever your first meeting in September is the most likely continuance date. I think that will give us enough time to address the issues that have been discussed.
Yeah, the meeting in September is September 12th, and I need to check with the Board on their availability. Just having you check those.
I can be available most any time.
There was a clipboard over here that we sent around, but I think there's more people in the room now than I see signatures. So, if you were here for this part of the public hearing, please make sure you sign that. It'll go around one more time.
Would be the 5th? That's a holiday.
5th is a holiday.
Yeah.
19th is a Monday. The 26th is a Monday.
So, in order for us to continue the public hearing, the Board has to grant an extension of the approval period. So, normally what we do is we have the approval period go at least two days beyond the date that we want to continue the hearing to. So, you said the 19th is a Monday?
It is.
So, the approval period, I would recommend, would be extended to probably the 23rd?
23 would be the Friday of that week.
That allows, if there's a reason for the Board to have to meet... We need 48 hours to...
Notice.
To advertise the agenda, and we would still be able to meet later that week if something happened on the 19th.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. We grant that extension or request that extension. However, the Board typically accommodates that.
So, your request is to extend the approval period to September?
23rd.
23rd. Close of business.
Yes.
Entertain a motion... Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We extend the approval period for the 255 Turnpike Road until September 23rd. Close of business, 2016.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. So, that extends the approval period to 23 September, which now allows us to continue the public hearing to September 19th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the public hearing for a site plan review of 255 Turnpike Road until September 19th, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. So, the public hearing is continued to 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM. Bill, you're noticing I'm doing this now. Remember, at the last meeting, we had reversed... I'm not making that mistake again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, a motion for a two-minute recess?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? See you in two minutes.
The planning board's comments.
Very good, thank you. Any, any board agree with that, that I'm, if I'm willing to work with Mrs. Luttrell?
Great idea.
Excellent.
Okay, that's what we'll do. I will check in with, we have a draft from the Conservation Commission, but I'm not sure this is, has been released. So it's, it's identified as a draft, but we'll, we'll work together and produce the planning board comments for that. The second item on that is the legal opinion. As you know, the planning board submitted a legal opinion request to town council with some specific questions regarding rulings of the zoning board of appeals, regarding the forty, chapter forty A use variance, and then also the chapter forty B component of the site. We submitted that legal opinion request, I believe it was on July sixth, I'm sorry, June sixth, and on July eleventh, we received a response from town council. It's five pages, and was told that this is a public document. So I'm not sure if it was posted on the website. We talked about this last week. I talked with Hillary. Do you know, Joe, if this was, was placed on the website?
No, I don't.
We'll check on that tomorrow, but I, I thought Hillary said that she was either going to post it or she had posted it. And it's a, it's a, an opinion from town council referencing a handful of court actions that would seem to support the actions of the ZBA relative to reaching into the jurisdiction of other boards. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Mills?
So if I interpret this correctly, though, I thought that there was still the need for us to do a full review. Correct? Even though...
We've stated many times that we're, the site plan review will, will be a full...
Full review.
Full site plan review.
Okay.
As, as we know, the planning board has a small size contract with a forty B consultant and planning consultant, and expect that we would get some feedback from that consultant relative to town council's words to help us understand. When I read it, it seemed, I seemed to understand most of it, or at least some of it, but some of it I didn't really understand what they were talking about relative to those cases, or at least the details of those cases weren't, you know, weren't in the letter. You can't, can't put all of that information into one letter, but the references are there. So I still think we need a little bit more assistance in trying to understand this whole process.
Agreed.
Mr. Mills?
I would agree with that. Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I was struck by one portion of the letter that said that the Board of Appeals shall request the appearance at said hearing of such representatives of said boards as are deemed necessary or helpful in making its decision upon such an application, and shall have the same power to issue permits or approvals of any local boards, blah, blah, blah. And that a Board of Appeals in making its decision on said applications shall take into consideration the recommendations of local boards. So that was in reference to the waivers, and I looked up some of the, the cases referenced in this letter from town council, and they also referenced that although the zoning board of appeals has the final decision-making authority, that they should be reaching out to other local boards for their opinion and recommendations, especially on the waivers of the town bylaws. So have they done that?
Well, my memory of attending almost every one of the ZBA hearings is that they've stated that they would welcome the comments. I think Mr. Jenks and I sat in the March twenty-fifth hearing where the ZBA went through section after section of the code and waived, listened to our objections or our concerns, and then went ahead and waived those sections anyways. So I think, I think the record might show that they've, I'm not sure if they've reached out and asked us, and maybe it's because they didn't have to, because we, we were attending the meetings and stood up and made comments whether they asked us or not. I do know that the ZBA members have stated many times that they would welcome and listen to our comments, but I don't, I guess we'd have to check the record to see if they've officially asked, asked for our comments. I wish they had asked for them on the waiving of the lower impact development section of the code. That's a huge section involving, you know, stormwater and impacts to the environment. Any other questions, comments on that one?
My only, you know, voice would be in support of Aldo participating in terms of clarifying this legal opinion and explaining it to me a little bit more, just so I understand exactly where we stand.
Anyone else who agree with that, maybe sit with Aldo on this? So what I'll do, what I can do, or ask the town planner to do, would be to put this discussion item on the August fifteenth agenda. Reach out to the town council between now and then to see if that's appropriate. Since the, his opinion is a public comment, a public document, it would seem that our discussion of it... Did you want to schedule another meeting? It should be sooner than later because the, you know, the public hearing is pressing on. Well, did, so did you want to have another planning board meeting between now and August fifteenth? Go ahead.
I think it would be best if we all met together. We all got the same comments at the same time personally.
So that would be Monday, August eighth. What's the Monday before that one? August first? Right. I don't want to do the first. Eighth is good? I knew we wouldn't make a month without, I knew, I knew it. I knew we couldn't go a month, like the other boards. Are you, are you around, Mimi?
I'm not here in the meeting.
How about the ninth, the tenth, a non-Monday?
I can do the eleventh that week, the Thursday, but I'm gone the previous days.
For some reason, August eleventh sounds like a day that I'm, should be doing something else. August eleventh. Why don't we try for August eleventh, seven PM? See if town council's available. Does, the two selectmen here, does, does that date, do you aware that if that date creates a problem, conflict with any, any other meetings? Conservation usually meets on Thursday, but we've, we've met at the same times. So we'll try for, that means we'll have one on August eleventh, we'll have another one on August fifteenth. That's actually good that we would have, if, if we can do that, to get some more guidance before the continuation of the public hearing for the Park Central Site Plan Review, which is August fifteenth. So we'll try that. Anything else on that item? Question is, will the documents be on the website tomorrow?
I just looked for it, and I don't find it on the, on the website now.
Well, some of them, we, we didn't get to four, four thirty today, so...
This is the legal opinion.
Legal opinion, yeah.
What, what we'll commit to is asking those who put things on the website to put it on the website tomorrow. We don't fully control what goes, what and when things go on the website.
Is there any other distribution means, like going to the town hall and picking up a copy?
You're welcome to come to the town hall and pick up a copy. Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you give, give yours? Try to get it on the website as soon as we can. Anything else? Mrs. Chimpas?
Karen Chimpas. Just a couple of quick observations, and then a question, because it's confusing to me, and I, you know, review use variances all the time, but this process has been quite unusual. You know, the ZBA issues these waivers, basically that doubles the density. The use variance was written by the developer's attorney, which, you know, might be okay for a 7-Eleven, but not okay for a hundred acre site, and, you know, it's been reviewed by town council, but I understand there weren't many changes or conditions. I don't think it's a very good business deal at all for the town, so I'm struck, the whole thing struck me as very odd on the waivers, and I echo the concerns of the planning board. And I'm wondering where that leaves the planning board. You know, I go back to the question I asked at the last meeting, which is, you know, who's in charge? And who's reviewing this project from thirty thousand feet? You know, location, the access, you've heard many concerns about it being safe, and that is a basic requirement in the first instance from mass housing itself. I don't know how it got its eligibility letter in the first instance. And with regard to access and roadways, you know, there's, again, just a dramatic difference between this quadrant and the other three quadrants of 495 that have miles and miles of feeder roads. I mean, this is a site that does not have that. Now, I understand there is a plan to put a road, but the, you know, it is woefully short of what's, I mean, doesn't even touch what's on the other quadrants. And with the concern over the amount of traffic trips coming out of there, call it round numbers, three hundred units times two cars times, I don't know how many times you leave your house a day, but it's five or ten from my house to go to groceries, whatever, you know, that's a lot of traffic trips. And this is also a basic underlying assumption that I think is just not correct. Very narrow misleading premises in the first place, very narrow scope that's misleading. But those are my concerns. The whole presumption of turning left onto Flag Road, only twenty percent of the traffic trips would go that way. We all know, you know, if you're not from, you know, if you're from out of the area, you really maybe not, don't understand the traffic patterns, but everyone sitting in this room at least understands that when Route nine backs up and you're trying to go eastbound, of course, the site inherently has no eastbound access, and that's why it hasn't been fully developed to date. I mean, for ad infinitum. But, you know, it has no eastbound access. So let's say Route nine backs up during peak commuter hours and you're seeking to go east. Okay, you're not gonna, you're not gonna jump one night. You're not gonna do what the, the traffic study says you're gonna do. And the other main artery, of course, is the Mass Turnpike I ninety, and which frequently backs up during peak commuter hours. So again, you know, the whole underlying assumption of going west to go east, I, I scratch my head over that. And then, of course, going down a narrow scenic roadway with, which is, you know, designated by state law, you know, is just silly. The idea of putting it through a school zone, pushing an elephant out a pinhole and going through a twenty mile an hour school zone is just not remediable. So in terms of just overall sense of this project, again, I would reiterate, you know, I... I have good friends, attorneys, forty B experts, you know, there are forty B experts, which, and that's important to the process, but they're not necessarily commercial real estate experts. They're not necessarily looking at this in terms of access and its fit to the area, and they're not necessarily understanding examples of other business parks and where forty Bs go in the state. So I can tell you from looking at some of the biggest commercial parks in the state, you know, this is really different, and it does explain why it hasn't been developed to date. So the question is really on meeting notices, I mean, we got, it turned out on Friday, we understood that the BOs meeting was canceled for tomorrow, which was, you know, important to the public processing requirement. And then I got back from the Cape yesterday, Sunday, and understood there's a meeting, you know, tonight. So I am listening to tapes of the meetings all the time, and it's confusing to me because I hear in the tapes, you're supposed to advertise meetings for thirty days, and apparently somebody knows the meeting dates are out there and exist. I've been told agendas are supposed to be posted, open meeting law says a minimum forty-eight hours, okay. I'm wondering why just simplicity, just dra, you know, put up a, post a draft agenda, it doesn't have to be final, you can still comply with open meeting law and, you know, post it the forty-eight hours in advance, but at least give the residents some notice. I mean, I had to get the dates by listening to tapes of the meetings and then circulating the dates of the meetings, which is just, I mean, who, we elected these officials and we're working with administrators, you can't tell us when the meeting dates are in advance so we can plan, it's July and August. So, so that's my question, is, is there some better way to make sure these public documents get posted right away so we don't have to be running down a town hall every time? You've got an entire town concerned about traffic coming down Flag Road, and where is it gonna go, folks? It's going on to Main Street, Main Street. We're already backed up during commuter hours, it can take an hour to get out of Southborough, you know, not every day, but some days it can. Main Street, it backs up all the way down past Parkerville. You know, we've got a school right here, Fay School, we've got, you know, the other schools, Down Flag, those are, you've got two school zones. So, you know, again, does this make sense? Thank you.
Thank you. As you, if you were here at the very beginning of the meeting, we introduced a new town planner, today's her first day, and she has attended some other of our meetings over the last month or so, and it's, it's clear that the posting of materials on the, on the website is a high priority. We've been working on that for the last couple of months and have, you know, had some frustration with it, but now that we have a full-time town planner back on staff, that's recognized as a very high priority, and hopefully all the people will see a big improvement on that. And I thought that our, the planning board meetings going out, you know, we have, now we have August eleventh, August fifteenth, September nineteenth, and September twenty-sixth. Those are the dates that we plan to meet. As you saw a few minutes ago, we weren't going to meet until August fifteenth, but we just inserted another meeting. So town planner is hearing this and hopefully find a, a way to make sure that all this stuff is on the website. Mr. Jenks?
I'm, I'm not sure I understood what you were saying about the agendas. I don't think I have attended a single meeting of the planning board that didn't have an agenda posted on the internet, posted in town hall, posted, access to agendas are available on the main town of Southborough webpage. They're also available on the planning board page. They get changed from time to time, they get revised, sometimes at the last minute. But the agendas, they've all been posted.
That's not the point.
Okay, I missed your point then, apparently.
Yeah. The point is, is the agendas and the meetings themselves don't go on town calendar really until the last possible moment, so no one can plan vacation or otherwise. I mean, the town is, the citizens are missing or unable to plan in advance, inadequate advance notice.
Okay, state law is forty-eight hours, as you know.
Correct, yes.
And what you're asking is, can we do better than that?
Yes, and, and can we, because, again, the meeting dates are known, perhaps we can post, you know, a draft, just a preliminary agenda, and then in forty-eight hours in advance, put up the, the final. And that way, people have the ability to plan during July and August and so forth.
Okay, I, I don't know if we're ever going to get to a point where we're posting an agenda with any kind of detail at all, a month in advance.
Well, the, the only point is, is just trying to get notice out to the public of the dates, yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Littrow?
I think the, all the meeting dates for the planning board for the entire year are on the, on the planning board section of the website, and the, and we do add other ones, as you saw tonight, but the, the ones for the year are on.
I appreciate that, and thank you for pointing that out, and I think the public at large doesn't know that, because I think the majority of people just go right to the calendar, and then it's not there. And in fact, if you look at, I think it's August is blank, I looked today, and of course, we have, you know, a ZBBA meeting on August third, it's well-known, it's been talked about in many meetings, it's just not on the calendar. Thank you.
I think they go on the calendar once they're posted, is the problem.
It's not there right now.
Right.
So we're still on the agenda item for the discussion of Park Central Draft Environmental Impact Report and the legal opinion. Now, the legal opinion we've covered, and we also talked about the draft environmental impact report. The discussion that we just had on Park Central traffic, I believe, is linked to that environmental impact report, which discusses that flow of traffic. And that's why I felt that it was okay for Mrs. Chimpkes to speak about that, and I, and others to speak about that. There was an email that was sent today at two fifty-four PM to the planning administrator, and it's from Jeff Capraro from thirty-four Deerfoot Road, and I'll read that. Dear Planning Committee, I'm working this evening, so cannot attend the meeting, but hope that you might consider the suggestions I recently made to the Board of Selectmen regarding establishing a requirement that appropriate access first is built before groundbreaking is allowed for an industrial scope development. Thanks, Jeff. And then this is the letter, I believe, the note to the selectman. Dear Board of Selectmen, I and many of my neighbors remain convinced that under no circumstances should any form of Park Central access be allowed onto Flag Road or the surrounding small streets that connect to it. Flag access would profoundly worsen the already unsafe conditions that exist on Flag Road, particularly for baby strollers, walkers, bikers, and runners who routinely use Flag Road and its feeder streets. Thank you for inviting opinions on safe alternatives. My suggestion, in its most simple form, is that the only appropriate access for Park Central development is onto a numbered road, that is Route 495, thirty, or nine. Direct on-ramp and off-ramps to 495 provide the simplest solution. Alternatively, an access road that parallels 495 to the north and connects with Route thirty at the 495 underpass provides another straightforward solution. Lastly, Route nine access would be viable if a left lane, nine west off-ramp to 495 North were installed, freeing up lanes for through traffic and nine west access to the right, or if that interchange were reconfigured with a rotary that includes access to Park Central. Whatever infrastructure solution might be pursued, ground should not be broken on the Park Central project until industrial-sized new infrastructure is installed, and under no circumstances should the access solution include Flag Road or its small feeder, road feeders. If an access solution involving a numbered route is not viable, the development itself is not viable. I will appreciate your confirmation of receipt of this email and inclusion of these suggestions in your records in advance of your upcoming meeting. Thank you, and then it's signed, Jeff. So was that, it says Dear Board of Selectmen, but there's no date, is this the same date? Did you, are you, is the selectman aware that you had this? No?
No, I've seen that, though. I don't know exactly.
The email that forwarded it is dated today, this afternoon, but Mr. Semino said to my question that he has seen it, so.
Maybe today, I'm checking it later.
He's checking to see if it's today. Fresh off the press. Well, we're in that agenda item, so if there's anyone else that wants to speak relative to the Park Central Draft Environmental Impact Report, you're welcome to get, come up and make your, your comments. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jonas Lennon again, resident of Flag Road. I concur with Mr. Capraro. Basically, I'm very concerned that this development might cause additional traffic on Flag Road. I have, we have four small children that use this particular road to get to back and forth to school, as well as recreational use. So my concern is for the safety of them and other people by any increased traffic load from this particular development on an already unsafe road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Howard Rose to Bantry, I think this was also in a letter, I sent a copy to you as well. I'm more concerned with reading the draft report that it actually doesn't mention any traffic going onto Flag Road. If you actually read the draft reports, I believe it was TEC who wrote it, all of the traffic, according to them, is going out onto Route nine, that all the new traffic patterns actually don't even mention, and their diagrams don't even show it going to Flag Road. So I would ask that you consider putting a condition that we follow the report as written in the draft and not allow any traffic on Flag Road, just as they intended. Very simple. If they're going to put it in the report, truth and honesty, let the traffic stand as they, as they designed it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Chimpkes, I just have a quick comment on the feasibility of the possibility of putting in a, a road heading north, and I think it's very important that each of you look at a plan that, you know, would, you know, show you where that road might go. But I believe it was, it was suggested at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that Labrie might be amenable to quote-unquote making a deal or something like that, when in fact, they came to the meeting the following night, I believe it was a planning board meeting, and said that, you know, I don't know where anyone got that idea, but it certainly didn't come from us. So, and I believe they stated that they were not, not amenable to such a thing. So, and then I would remind the board that, you know, volume's a volume. I mean, if you're gonna take, and by the way, this needs to be looked at in total, it's total potential build-out, not just, you know, these residential units, but there is a commercial portion to that, to it, you know, if you're gonna filter it all out onto Main Street, you're not gonna have backup from Parkerville or Deerfoot, you're gonna have backup to Westboro Line, you know, I mean, it's just gonna, it'll be right to that proposed point of entry and ingress and egress. So, you know, I just, you know, would have to say that I don't consider that to be a possibility. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? You need to go to the microphone.
Dave Schwartz, fifty-five Flag Road. I'm just frustrated. I'm looking at this now for the first time.
What is that you're looking at?
This is the paper that you just provided, the legal, we're meeting on the legal opinion and no one's seen it, right? So how are we meeting on it?
We put it on the agenda to discuss it as we, as, first of all, I guess, to let the public know that we've received, that we had requested a legal opinion, and that we received one. Okay. And that we were informed by town council that it's a public document, so, again, informed, tried to inform that we intend, if it's not on the website, we intend to put it on the website. And then, as you heard our discussion, there's some points of clarification that the board feels that we need, it's, and that's why it was on the agenda.
Okay. Well, there's quite a bit of controversial opinion here regarding this particular park side development and the precedents that are cited as they relate to the specific conditions for affordable housing, and whether or not that impacts the traffic patterns in a local neighborhood, that that can be overridden. On page three, paragraph three, it says, you know, Taylor Cove Development is a precedent that allows for any multi-use site to override any previous zoning. I mean, this type of situation is what destroys towns, right? So we're not gonna let that happen as a town, we're just not gonna let it happen. I'll make sure people get access to this, but that's just an opinion.
Again, we'll try to get that on the website if it's not there now. You didn't find it, Phil?
I didn't find it.
Yeah. So we'll make that a, hopefully a priority for tomorrow to get it on the website. Anything else on this? Anyone else, questions, comments?
Can I interrupt, make one comment first?
Yes.
Stay there, stay there. We'll get it on the website, we've set up a meeting, or we're going to try to set up a meeting on the eleventh, and that will, of course, be a public meeting on, on that legal opinion. So anybody is welcome to come and participate.
Right, and I think what we, the way we felt was that the meeting would be with town council, of course, we haven't checked with, to see if, if town council's available, and if he's not, then maybe he'll propose another date that we can try to, you know, meet before the continuation of the Park Central Site Plan Review. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow on to David's comment here, so my understanding that the, on the agenda was to review the legal opinion that was supposed to have been made public, which it was not. So I'd like to make sure to get this particular agenda item back on this meeting with this particular legal opinion be made public before the meeting, so that the town people have a time to review it.
I can tell you that when we got the opinion, which was last Friday? On Friday, the eleventh, if I remember right, I usually come in to the planning office, you know, the, the town hall closes at noon, so I try to come in around between eleven and twelve to make sure that I don't get surprised at the dump on the next day. So I try to make sure I'm updated on what's going on and materials so that.
At the transfer station. The townies are allowed to call it the dump. So I believe that's when I received it, and like most people, I was on my way to having a nice weekend, but I did read it. I read it, I sat down, and I read it word for word. And so I felt that it should be on tonight's agenda, and I put it on the agenda. I think Mr. Mills and I spoke about that.
We did.
I reached out to the other members, but I was glad that they didn't respond, because I was feeling that, because they didn't, they were actually having some fun, on vacation someplace. So that's how it wound up on the agenda. Now, between last Friday and now, I discussed this with Hillary, who's our administrator, administrative assistant, and again, I believe she was, we had the discussion as to whether or not it's a public document, because sometimes we get legal advice from town council, and it's privileged, and most of it is. But, so it brought my attention to it that she told me that he specifically said it was a public document, and therefore, we agreed that if it's a public document, it should be put on the website. So how successful, or how many attempts was made to get it on the website? I don't know. But we have a new town planner, and she's got a wide-open agenda for tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and if you need any help with putting stuff on the website, please let me know. So just for the record, then, this was supposed to be a public document review at this meeting. It was not made public before the meeting. So I asked Mr. Chairman that we schedule an meeting to review this particular one, so that the citizens of the town have a chance to review the documents.
Yeah, and as we said, we've scheduled one for August 11th. If town council can meet at that time. And if there's a date before that, we'll post it. Mr. Rose?
Hi. Procedural question, and I don't know the answer I'm asking. We have a draft environmental report that goes from MEPA, from the state, and they've asked for comments back, and I think from the website, our comments are due to the Selectmen by the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, and you're gonna give comments back. I guess, I'm wondering what the procedure was up to this point. It doesn't look like the town has had much involvement in that procedure at all. It's been the state and the developer besides giving comments. Do we have a chance to work with the state to negotiate this and figure out what's best for our town as far as access, or are they just gonna push this through regardless of what we say and what they feel is best based on the data they've received from the developer?
I'd like to go to the first part of your question. We're aware that the Conservation Commission has prepared a draft, or is preparing a draft, and there's, the draft is addressed to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It's a comment directly from Conservation Commission to the state.
Mr. Beaton, I guess it is, I think it was his name?
Yes. Secretary Matthew Beaton. So we'll look into this, and this was a little bit of a discussion during that agenda item as to whether the planning board's comments on this goes directly to the secretary, or if they have to go through another town department. So did you say that comments have to go through the Selectmen's office, or was that a question?
You can go directly, I just saw on the website that there was a request, if you had comments, to send them to the Selectmen's address. You can send them directly, and my comments went directly to Secretary Beaton. I just, the second part of my question, though, is what authority, what role does the town have in this? It's a state, to do the 40B, at least, there's a state sign-off they need to make that happen, which they need that MEPA sign-up, but where do we step in to have any kind of control over our town on that as far as safety and roads and even conservation? We're making comments, but where is there our say at the state level? Is there one, is my question? It may not be something you can answer, but is there someone who can answer that?
Similar question has been asked over and over about the 40B, and I think the ZBA has responded that the state agency, Mass Housing Authority, has the final decision. Now, relative to the environmental impact report, the state agency would be the secretary, would be the secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, right?
It's the same agency, but is the town talking to them, and do we have any say in that? Any direct line of discussion, sort of the same comments that we're sending? Or is there any discussion with the town and the state over this?
It would seem that way, because the Conservation Commission is gonna submit a letter, and we plan to.
They're sending a letter and comments, but that seems to be just that. I don't think there's been an actual face-to-face conversation anywhere. It just seems absurd to me that the state can come in and do something in the town without discussing it with the town. The entire traffic pattern has been worked out with Mastah, the developer, and no one from this town has sat on any of those meetings, and they just came up with this plan. And now we're behind the eight ball trying to resolve that and saying this is not safe after they've been working out this plan for three years. When does the town actually get to sit in and have a conversation and actually say that there's some, you know, we have something to say about this as well? And I don't know the procedure, I don't know the process, it just seems like we've been, we're the missing links that's been out here somewhere. This has been pushing forward with the developer and Mastah to get them what they want, and there's been no consideration for the town, and the town hasn't had a seat at the table where the town really should have a seat at the table. It's our town. So I guess I'm, I still want to know what the procedural is, is when does the state and the town get together, and is that the Board of the Selectmen that should be having that conversation? Is it the ZBA? Is it Planning Board? Is it our new town planner? Welcome to the party. So I just, I don't know. It just seems that we keep being, that seems to be the answer, is I don't know, and keep falling farther behind. This is pushing forward. When do we get our say? And who pushes for it? And I don't mean to be throwing this on you. I'm just referring to an answer.
I'm guessing by the silence, no one knows the answer to that question. Did you know, Mr. Shay? You look like you're getting ready to get up.
So, I mean, my understanding of the MEPA process is that the say is had through correspondence to the MEPA office in response to the various documents that are submitted. So the first document submitted by the proponent, I would assume, would be an environmental notification form, ENF, and based on comments received on that ENF, the secretary made the determination that the project needed to proceed to the environmental impact report phase. So the draft environmental impact report has been prepared, submitted, and that document is now, they are receiving review comments on that. So the Board of Selectmen did meet this past Friday, and one of the action items that we did take was that we requested that the town administrator compile all the correspondence that our office has received to date on the Park Central project, specifically related to the traffic, but all correspondence that we've received to date. We've requested that the town administrator forward all that correspondence to the MEPA office, so that the secretary and those reviewing the draft environmental impact report can review all the correspondence that has been submitted by residents and others, and factor those comments into decisions that they have, that the state will have, on the draft environmental impact report. I also requested, and I think this is what Mr. Rose was referring to, I requested that Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale post either on the town's website, through the Twitter page, just what that deadline is for receiving and filing comments to MEPA on the draft environment, environmental impact report, and that deadline that the state has is the 22nd. So I think if there are others in the town that have not yet commented on the project, that they should get comments into the state by the 22nd. So, and I know you had mentioned that you're gonna be working to get comments in, Conservation Commission is getting comments in, but, I mean, that's the, that's the MEPA process, is they put the reports that have been prepared out for public comment, and then they will receive comments from the public on the documents that are prepared, and they will factor, they're the ones that make the decision on what the comments are that they have to the proponent for the final environmental impact report that will be prepared. So the more comments that can be offered to them, you know, the stronger voice hopefully will have a greater impact on the state and the decision that they offer to the proponent.
Thank you. I'll just make one last comment that I'm a little disappointed in, the MEPA process, because there's no, seems to be any real checks and balances on the actual data and the reports they're getting. The traffic reports they've gotten are arguably biased as they are written by the developer, and there seems to be no checks and balances to come up with another plan. I actually sent them our Flag Road study, and thank you for having that done. It's the first time that the, of three years of asking for traffic to include pedestrian and bicycle traffic, it was ignored in every study, and including the recent environmental draft, still doesn't mention bicycle and pedestrian traffic, with the exception of saying there's no safe way to do it on the main roads, that still doesn't even address Flag Road at all. So it appears, at least by the draft report, the state isn't even considering Flag Road, as I mentioned before, at all. And there's gotta be a better way to get the voice, our voices heard as a town, to make sure that we're covered, that I think, you know, there seems to be a flaw in the MEPA process. And I don't know if there's any way to solve that, but just to state it, but anything you as a board can do to force that issue that the entire project isn't being studied in this report, and as you do your review, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry, just last question, point of clarification on deadlines. I was not aware at all that, you know, a deadline would be, is it July 22nd or August 22nd?
July.
July 22nd, comments to the state. So would we submit those directly to the state, or to, who do we submit them to?
Those comments can be submitted directly to the state, to the MEPA office. You can find a contact through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act website. Again, the town, the Board of Selectmen's office, all the correspondence that we receive, we will also be forwarding to MEPA as well. So if folks get those comments into the Board of Selectmen's office in advance of the 22nd, we will forward them to MEPA.
So it can be amended, the comments can be amended by sending in another? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on, yes, ma'am?
I have one question. Kacitski from 40 Flag Road. We have recently moved to Southborough, two years, and, but I know that this discussion has been happening for a while. I'm just wondering whether at any point there has been a discussion of an alternative location for this project. I mean, if the state imposes this kind of development on towns, and if there is no way out of it, it seems like a logical progression should be some kind of environmental impact kind of plan developed first, and then a location is picked, rather than the developer insisting on a particular location, which is really problematic, it seems. So have there been any discussions of an alternative location for this state-imposed project at any point? Thank you.
Mr. Jenks, I think you can do a much better job than we can.
The, the state didn't impose this project. The state imposes a certain number of affordable, as they define affordable, housing units in a town. I think 10% is the, is the number. And if the town does not have that many, a developer who owns a piece of land, or comes in and buys a piece of land, can propose a 40B project on that land. So it's the developer that picks the land. Clearly, part of that is availability, another part is affordability. The developer is doing this to make money, not to provide affordable housing for Southborough. So, so the procedure naturally starts with the developer saying, "I've got an idea. I'd like to see a project here. And if I make this a 40B project, I get to deal only with one town board." There are a couple of exceptions, but mainly with one town board. The 40B regulations basically say that that board, which is the zoning board of appeals, can step into the shoes of any other board and do what, anything that board can do, right down to issuing permits. So if, I'm trying to think of a board other than the planning board to use as an example. If Conservation has a local rule, that's not a state rule, and Conservation says, "No, we're not gonna issue a permit for this project." The zoning board can say, "We will issue it on your behalf." So that's the one-stop shopping that the developer gets in return for helping the town build its affordable housing inventory. So that's, it's not, this project was not imposed by the state. There have been, I think, two other proposals to do a 40B on this site years ago. I, I keep hearing they were dropped because it's not a good site for affordable housing project. I was involved in one of those, representing the developer, and it was dropped because it was around 2008, and the real estate market tanked, and that's why it was dropped. Would it have gone to fruition? Who knows? Maybe they have the same problems, and we'd be in the same boat, I don't know. But the state doesn't impose this particular project.
Mr. Chairman? So I was just, I think that's a terrific explanation, Mr. Jenks. You may want to just layer on, if you don't mind. You're quite right, the state does not impose this particular project, and as you mentioned, the state has a statutory and regulatory scheme under 40B to encourage affordable housing, and therefore streamline the permitting process, and, and this is most important in this context, I think, the state does not brook denying these permits lightly. And, and to the extent that we consider a permit under 40B and impose whatever conditions we may impose that the state will allow, then we have a certain amount of control over the final product. If we were to, there's a lot of hue and cry in town that either this board, or my board, or other boards, "Stop this project, defeat this project, we should not approve this project." We don't, we don't have that power in a vacuum, and that really doesn't get said enough, if at all, in response to those kinds of requests. So if and when this project was ever denied at the town level, it will be closely reviewed at the state level, and we need to keep it, we need to keep that in mind as to... And we need to keep it, we need to keep that in mind as to whether it will realistically, whether any denial that we make in town will realistically be upheld at the state level.
Also, as, as part of the, your question, ma'am, if you look at the, the state requires the towns to have an affordable housing plan, and Southborough has an affordable housing plan. The latest addition is, I think it's February of 2015. So you were questioning the particular location of the project on this particular piece of land. If you go into the affordable housing plan for the town of Southborough, you'll see that it recommends that affordable housing be placed throughout the town, not jammed into a corner. So there's, there's some strength, I believe, in the town's desire to have an affordable housing plan, and to ask, you know, the approving authorities to follow that plan, and, and encourage the developers to do as that plan recommends. And of course, this project, in some areas, is severely inconsistent with the Southborough's, Southborough's plan. And going back to what Mr. Semino said, if Southborough, and we've had this discussion, not just here in town, but with other towns, some towns, their percentage is very low, 1%, 2%, 3% of affordable housing. Southborough's-
Why is it not just saying, I thought it was 10% for each town?
No, no, that's the goal, is the 10%. But some towns are only at a very low percentage, because they don't, they don't, for whatever reason, they, they, they don't, let's say, encourage 40Bs. Southborough has been, has a, has a pretty good history of working with and approving 40Bs, and our percentage is very close to 10%. So I believe that if the state were to ever review this project, or any 40B project, they would ask the first question, "Do you have an affordable housing plan?" "Yes, we do." "Is it current?" "Yes, it is." "Is it consistent with the state goals?" "Yes, it is." "What's your percentage?" "How close, do you have a history of rejecting, or, or, casting, or denying, finding ways to not have 40Bs?" That's not the case in Southborough, it's just the opposite. So I think if, if I, you know, were on a state board, and I saw that you had a town that is encouraging 40Bs and moving toward the 10%, and we have been, progressive, you know, it's been a steady progression toward the 10%, that, that I would look upon the town of Southborough as a good 40B town, over some of the other ones who are less encouraging the 40Bs. So if, if for whatever reason, this 40B was either denied or approved with conditions that were similar to what we read tonight, which is, you know, "Don't, don't build it until the infrastructure can support it." I mean, the state would have to consider that, that Southborough actually is a good 40B partner and player, and, and they should be listened to. So if you, if you want to look at that, it's on, it's on the website, it's Affordable Housing Plan. Yes, sir?
Thank you for the explanation, I think it was spot on. There's one thing I'd like to add, that one of the main components that can actually stop a 40B is safety. It's practically the only one that can stop a 40B is safety. I think the town has a very strong case on safety, now that we've actually done proper studies, and I would hope that the town would not be afraid to do that. Every time we go to a ZBA meeting, all I hear is this, "We're afraid to stop, to say anything else, because they might bring, we might lose, and then we have no control whatsoever." I would ask us not to be afraid anymore. We've done our due diligence on this project. It's very clear, it's grown from this little 180-unit thing on the far side of the lake to this massive thing covering every square inch of 100 acres. It's not what it was, when it went to the state for its first approval, it's four times the size of what it is, it's drastically huger, huger, huge compared to what it started as. We have a strong case on safety. And I'm not even saying stop the project, I think it's gotten too large for what it is. If it was back in its original form, and I keep saying, hearing, "Oh, well, he was going to make this for 40Bs." It made us a bold assumption that he would get the, a permit for four 40Bs. He can barely, we're starting one with what it is now. I think the town, and I wish the ZBA was here to hear this, and I'll see this at the next meeting, needs to stop being afraid of standing up for ourselves and saying, "This isn't the right project at this time in this location." If there's a way to increase the road and, and make it safe, that'd be great. But at this time, the town needs to stop being afraid and stand up for ourselves and deny this project until such time as we can increase the roads with the state. Thank you.
It's, it's after 10 o'clock, so we have a couple of other items on the agenda, we'll, we'll listen to a little bit more. And I think that because it's after 10 o'clock, it's okay to say huger. It's, it's getting late.
Just one last brief summary comment, which, for the benefit of our new town planner, not to overstate the obvious here, but the state has denied access on, via the main roadway next to Cumberland Farms onto Route 9. Okay, so that's, you know, off the table for safety reasons. Okay, so to kick the can down the road onto a winding, narrow road that has blind curves in it, and a school zone, I mean, there's your precedent. You know, it is the state's own precursor requirement, precursor requirement, public safety and welfare. If people are trapped in their homes, you know, that's, that's another thing altogether. And then the people who live in that immediate neighborhood are, many, many of them are young families with very small children, right at the end of flag, senior seniors. And I'm talking, you know, 80s, 90s, a woman with an infant and a toddler, people with disabilities live in the area, severe autism. There's a mentally disabled gentleman who does his power walk every Sunday, from that immediate area down to the end of flag, turns around and comes back again. So we're talking about welfare as well, because if they're trapped in their homes, you know, I, I think these are the things that aren't reflected in a, in a parking study. So also, in a previous iteration of this proposal, you know, I did meet with the Secretary of Economic Affairs at the time, and he assured me that the state does not impose these kinds of projects on the locals if it's not appropriate. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Semino?
Just, just to clarify, it's a bit of good news, I think. I don't believe, and I'm happy to be corrected, I actually don't believe the state has the power and has not ordered the closure of Park Central Drive. They've requested that it be done, but they can't force that issue at this point. So to, to Mr. Rose's point about what we as a town can do, can we, you know, if we were to be inclined to approve this project, can we approve it with a condition that Park Central remain open? I believe we can, unless I'm, unless I'm misinformed. And if any of you know differently, please say now, because I don't want to continue to, to speak to this, this way, if I'm not correct. But, but, and it's a subtle distinction, but I think they have, they have strongly requested the applicant to agree to close it, but I don't believe they can order it.
It's very concerning to me that there be any advocacy of any type by any public official on, before looking really, examining closely all the facts and reports on safety, including the proponents' own conclusions and how they've, you know, all of a sudden changed over time. There's been a lot of changes on this that are very concerning. The proponents' own proposal has traffic doing a hard right onto flag, and out onto Route 9 in a structured way. And then the next thing you know, it's all, you know, traffic's coming down flag, I mean, and that's residential and commercial. So now you're faced with the prospect of, you know, Iowa was almost hit head-on by an 18-wheeler, wheeling off Route 9, onto flag. And there's a car, a narrow culvert there that I believe is controlled by the state, very narrow, accommodates one car, so where do you pull over? You know, you both hit the brakes and hope not to, you know, get hit. So in light of the fact that there's very young children and seniors in those homes, I mean, they've got a right to own those homes, you know, just as much as you do, or I do, or any of you do. You know, they're, you know, trying the best they can to, you know, live life and go out for walks, and, you know, on a narrow, narrow roadway, I've heard, I've heard it stated otherwise, "Oh, that it's wider than you think." Well, it isn't. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board, and I apologize. I did only hear you read one of the emails, the one from Jeff Capraro. There should have been another email coming in, from Rachel Lipkin. And if you haven't received that, I can read that out to you. Okay. So dated today, "Dear Board of Selectmen," again, I don't know, was sent to the Board of Selectmen, "As a resident of Flag Road, I implore you to disallow access from the Park Central Development onto Flag Road and any of its tributaries. This is a residential neighborhood with direct access to two of our town's schools. As a parent," me too, "of an incoming fourth and seventh grader, the notion of additional traffic on Flag Road makes me exceedingly nervous. My children and my neighbors' children love the independence and healthy lifestyle afforded to them by walking to school. It is the safety of school passageways, if the safety of school passageways is not enough, Flag and Deerfoot Roads are frequently used by many residents who park their cars and utilize this picturesque neighborhood in which to walk, run, bike, and even fish. Quite simply, these roads are too narrow to accommodate the extra traffic that the Park Central Development will create. This project is not viable without first addressing an already treacherous traffic situation along Flag Road. An alternate access road to this proposed development must be pursued without accessing Flag Road. Please include these adjustments in our records for your upcoming meeting." So, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board, as you've heard tonight, there's been several concerns raised, not only by not following due process, as well as making public documents available and meeting dates as required, in addition to some concerns regarding biased and incorrect traffic study reports, as well as numerous safety concerns. So as a resident of Flag Road, I don't think that this particular development can be approved by the planning board based on these numerous concerns. Thank you very much.
Very briefly, my name is Michael Robbins, 47 Deerfoot Road. I'm really new to town, so I'm coming in very late to this. I don't want to hit on anything that's been covered. As a real estate attorney and a former chair, not chair, but a clerk of the zoning sort of appeals, I just don't know the level of authority you have over this project, but to the extent that you do with respect to any environmental study and input that you might have, I would just suggest, again, it's been hit upon, but safety, the density, and still, I question the integration of the 40A and the 40B projects together. I, again, I wasn't in town for those meetings, I haven't had the opportunity to review those zoning tapes, but I, I find it surprising, the size, scope of the, of those two projects coming together with no other access right now realistic, other than pouring onto flag, which is legally designated as a country road. Again, I wasn't here for any of the votes, but the expansion of the width of flags, potential sidewalks, speed humps, I believe, from what I've heard, that those have all been shouted down, but to a certain degree, to the extent there is this project, I do think those need to get reconsidered. And again, I do think is something that needs to be considered, at least as a last resort, is potentially making part of that road a one-way road. Again, I know your oversight over this project is probably limited in its scope, but I did want to just bring that to you all's attention, and thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're going to move on to the next agenda item? That's it? Okay, our, our next, like, right now, our next planning board meeting is August 11th, tentatively, and then followed by the continued public hearing for Park Central Site Plan Review on August 15th. Next item on the agenda is annual committee and board signature authorization form. We need to sign this form that allows the new town planner to sign invoices and payrolls. It says here, the following vote, following vote was taken, this is the, this is the letter, and it says, "The Southborough Planning Board votes to authorize the individual below, and it's Jothi Gramma, to sign invoices and payrolls. It is understood that this provision does not eliminate the responsibility of the other members of the commission." Well, in this case, it's the board. So it's a, need a motion to, to grant that authorization. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and sign the signature authorization form for Jothi to perform signatures for payments, invoices, and payrolls for the planning board.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero, please sign and return. Next item on the agenda is the planner's report. This will be my last, hopefully, planner's report. Next time we do this, it'll be much more thorough and professional. At our scheduled August 15th meeting, which is the continued public hearing for Park Central Site Plan Review, we also have an agenda item, which is the discussion, it's a discussion, and it says Main Street Reconstruction Project. So even though I think people were under the impression that it, that project was not brought forward as a result of the meet, the town meeting in the spring, that vote didn't prevail that the project was not going to move forward, yet we've been asked to have this discussion on the Main Street Reconstruction Project, and so therefore it's on, on our agenda. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, and that the public was aware that that's going to be an agenda item. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Destiny, you gave a big list, big package of minutes, and cross-checked those with those that were not approved, correct? Mr. Mills?
Ready for a motion?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept and approve the meeting minutes from February 11th, 2016, as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to, zero to zero, to one, four to zero to one. One abstention, maybe he wasn't on the board then. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from March 7th, 2016, as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to one. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make, make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 21st, 2016, as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to one. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from April 11th, 2016, as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to one. Andrew, can we take a quick timeout? The May 16th meeting minutes, I just caught a couple things. On line 98, Mr. Stein, Mrs. Latrell, Mrs. Gillespie, and it's Mrs. Diamond Bracchio, right?
Hold up, we're going to make a motion to even discuss him.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the May 16th- that we approve the May 16th, 2016, meeting minutes, as written.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Mr. Stein?
Line 98, Mr. Stein, Mrs. Latrell, Mrs. Gillespie, and Mrs., it's currently question marks. It's Mrs. Diamond hyphen Braccio. B-R-A-C-C-I-O. And then on line 122, "The town of Southborough is working with Massachusetts Audubon in hopes of being granted control of the Google Drive." I think it says Goodel. It's Google Drive, which is, of course, the point of access for the deed research product being prepared by Mass Audubon. Those were my only notes on those minutes.
Back to Mr. Mills. Do you want to accept those as a party motion?
Yeah, make a motion. We accept the May 16th, 2016, meeting minutes, as amended.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the June 6th, 2016, meeting minutes, as written.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Mrs. Latrell?
I have a couple things on that. On line 33, "Goal is to return it to a more natural state." Should be meadow, as intended. And then on...
Clear on that one, Destiny?
And on line 49, "Mr. Stein made a motion to nominate Mimi Latrell to the Solar Overlay District Working Group." I think it was the Solar Overlay District Rules and Regulations Working Group.
Yeah, and I don't think... I think that was seconded by myself, not Mr. Stein.
Got that one, Destiny? Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the June 6th, meeting minutes, 2016, as amended.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five to zero.
Does that get us current with the meeting minutes, Mr. Chairman? Or Destiny? We have a couple still standing?
It's on the... It's on the hybrid app.
So we got a couple to go.
Thanks. Good job. What are the remaining ones? Oh, but we have a plan to get those done, right? Yep. Yep. So, pretty good. All caught up? Just about? We have been meeting a lot for, you know, the summertime. And looks like that'll continue. But that's pretty much, I mean, I remember, I think it was in 2012, Mr. Semino, we met at least a half a dozen, eight times, many, many times throughout that summer. Mr. Mills?
I motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? You and I, all in favor? Five to zero. Adjourn. Thank you.